Alright, like follow me to order at 6:03 on the 25th. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Our first agenda is Mrs. Salvo. Secondly, Karen reached out to our committee, our building principal and superintendent, and had requested that she committed a speech to our committee regarding the class size. So with that, we have a floor for Karen Townsend.
Hi, happy to have you to all of you. Thank you so much for giving the agenda tonight, and especially thank you for putting me first. I really appreciate the consideration since you have a lengthy agenda, so thank you for that. I am a parent of a second and third grader, and I have been really happy with AGS from day one. It's been a wonderful, pleasant experience overall. Love the teachers, love the sport, love the community, love the administration. It's been really wonderful. I have been concerned since day one, however, about the class size for the class of 2029 cohort. Up until this point, you have seen here, I have complained, I really haven't said not, because I felt, well, what are we going to do? Right? It's just sort of, it is what it is. But as time has progressed, I feel that the need has really arisen, that the problem hasn't solved itself, so to speak. So I am requesting that we add a teacher to the class of 2029 cohort to affect it next year as of August 31st, or whatever the start date is, and to follow them as need be. Of course, you could reassess every September to see what the numbers are, but as need be, it would follow them for fourth grade, sixth grade, and 2nd, 6th grade. So if you are agreeable to that, then that's wonderful, and that would be great. If you are not agreeable to that, then I respectfully request that we have a conversation about that here, where there's community members and teachers present tonight, so that we can all be a part of the discussion about why perhaps you would not be agreeable to adding a fifth teacher to the class of 2029 cohort.
Okay, so I'll speak first. This is a very, very large and complex decision, and I mean, I understand your concern, and frankly, the purpose of you being here tonight is to express your concern. We are not in any way, at least I'm not, prepared to make a decision here tonight, one way or the other. And I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces that come into this decision-making, and so, and this is frankly the first I'm hearing of it. So it's like, I get to know everything that you guys need to tell us as a committee, and then we need to have a conversation surrounding budget, the school building itself. I mean, there is, it's such a large, complex issue that I think tonight, we're just prepared to listen.
Okay, I appreciate your listening, for sure. I have to say, I'm disappointed for you to say that this is the first you've heard of it, because for me, right, if you're in a school community, you should be aware of something as glaring as the fact that one class is inequitable in size to the other classes, that some students are faced with a 24 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, and other students are faced with a 16 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, or 20 to 1. So I don't feel that this should be a shock or surprise, the issue, this shouldn't be the first you've heard of it. Yes, it's the first time I brought it up, I don't know if other parents, I believe other parents have mentioned it in the past, so I'm not saying I'm...
Well, we're aware of the class size. We are well aware that the 3rd grade is 100 students, the 2nd grade is 94 students, our kindergarten class is 66 students. Like, we are very well aware of how many students are enrolled in our class, in our school building. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that this is the first I've heard that's concerned. Am I alone in that?
Okay, so I give us these 10 categories or classifications for us to deliberate over, to see if the child has one or more of these disabilities. So our team, our first action is determine whether or not the child has one or more of the following disabilities. That's only step 1 in the process. Even though we acknowledge that the child has a disability, that doesn't necessarily translate to...
My perspective would be that that would be concerning, like, in-house, right?
Absolutely. My door is always open. Please communicate with me. All of our emails are published on the website, like, absolutely. So the chain of command is teacher, teacher...
Okay, so I guess I should have partnered her four years ago, and I'm sorry...
And the teacher goes to the building principal, the principal goes to the superintendent, if it's not, our assistant superintendent, and then the superintendent, and if at that point, the issue has been thoroughly discussed, and it is not resolved, it is brought before our committee. So now we're sort of, whoop, all the way to the committee, so that's why we're opening our ears to listen.
Okay, so, thank you again for that, I appreciate it. And I, I guess I wish I had complained about class size as a kindergarten year, but I just felt that I didn't want to be unreasonable, and I understood that perhaps there wouldn't be a solution right at hand, right at break. But I feel that there's been enough time, and the students have had large class sizes for four years, going into five, six, and seven years, and I feel that now is the time. There's a couple of concerns. One is with Ms. Blackwood retiring, which, congratulations to her, that, that makes it a little bit more pressing for me. And the other is to just get things ready for next year, before it's too late. I don't want another year to go by. So again, thank you for listening, and I guess I wish I had started complaining in kindergarten, my bad. So what I guess we want to know is why you would not be agreeable to entertain the idea, because I feel that you're not agreeable right now to the idea. So what are your concerns about perhaps adding a 5th grade, a 5th teacher to the cohort?
I wouldn't say we're not agreeable, I just said we're listening to concerns.
Okay, well, we want to listen to your concerns too, that's what we hear. So we want to know, because I don't want to walk out the door and then just say, oh, well, we decided not to do it, and then we don't have the momentum, we don't have the teachers here, and we don't have the parents here, and Ms. Blackwood retires, and there's not another meeting until January, and then it's like, oh, well, maybe we'll do it, and then all of a sudden, oh, the teacher's schedules have to be set by May or June, whatever the date is, and then it's, oop, too late. So I guess that's where the pressure for me is coming from, that there's just not enough time to not have a conversation at this point. So, you know, I tried to take the right venue, and I, and I again appreciate the time, but I really, really want us to be able to have a discussion about what can be done, and I don't know if, again, it's either you're agreeable or you're not, and if you're not, I think that we have a right to hear why you would not be agreeable to it.
I agree. I agree with having a conversation, I mean, um...
Go ahead.
So we had the...
Um, sure, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if this is formality, I don't want to beat a dead horse, Karen, I've said it pretty clear. We have voiced our concern about the numbers, even last year, and administration has said, we've dealt with these same amount of numbers as your teachers are dealing with them, so if we can deal with them before, they can deal with them now. I understand you haven't heard it, but as parents, we have been voicing the opinion. I'm just a little shocked you guys haven't heard it, so I don't know if it's just being stopped at a certain level, but I know class of 2029, the last two years, it's been an ongoing thing. Classroom size, bus size, I know buses something different, but just the quantity of the students. So I just wanted to make a point as a parent. If we're all aware of it, I'm just shocked that you guys are not, and I don't know where communications get broken, so that's all I wanted to share.
So just for clarification, we're talking about the current 3rd grade, that's it. We're not talking about the class of 94 2nd graders coming up right behind you, correct? You're only speaking on behalf of the 3rd grade, so we're not taking the second large class size into consideration at all?
No, I'm just saying, parents from 2029, because that's all I can speak of, and raise any concerns.
Right, right, I'm asking if that's... Okay. Go ahead.
So we had the first discussion of the budget, Frank can correct me if I misspeak, but the first round of budget discussions took place last Monday night?
Yes, they did.
So we have about $400,000 as a town for incoming, the upcoming year, to spend additionally, if the town chooses to do so. Just rough estimates, you're going to see $200,000 go to So Lake, just to keep everything the same here, you're looking at $135,000. So it doesn't leave the town with a awful lot, you're going to look at $100,000 for the rest of the town. So we're already spending to that limit, basically. So if you're going to ask to increase positions, that's fine, we can try to put things into the budget, make decisions based on what everyone feels is appropriate, and thank you for coming tonight to tell us that you think the class size is too high. What, I guess, what issues are you seeing within the class that the concern is so high?
So that's a great question, and fortunately, we have such wonderful teachers here in the building that, from my own personal perspective, for my child, I'm not here just for my child, right? But for my child, there aren't a tremendous amount of issues, a little bit of frustration with chaos in the room, bumping into kids, and the coat falling off the rack, and the chair's coat with another kid, coat rack with another child, papers on his desk, and just can't leave around the room, that's sort of everyday chaos for the report back I've heard from my child. But the teachers are so great at handling the room, that they're, I don't get much report back on them. However, I am also an educator, and I know from my own personal experience that class size is everything. Class size is absolutely everything, that when you've got 20 students in front of you, and the connection you can make with them, the deeper learning you can get to with them, when you remove that chaos from the room, the education is so much, so much deeper and more meaningful for the student. So the, I think that there might be more issues than that, maybe other parents can speak too, but again, I'm not here just for my child, right? I'm here because there's, you know, my child's best friend who struggles with math. Goes home and cries about math homework. Now, it's not the teacher to blame, please don't twist it to think the teacher's not doing their job, but when you've got one teacher, and you've got 25 minutes for math, I don't know what it is, right? And you go around from group to group to group, and time's up, well, maybe you got around one and a half times, or maybe you got around three quarters of the time around to each group, and maybe my son's best friend could have used that second round of extra help, but didn't get it. Not the teacher's fault, but physically, the teacher, there's only one teacher, I just, it's like waitressing tables, right? If you give me four tables, I'm the best waitress in the room. If you give me five tables, someone's not getting something, right? It's just not going to happen, it's just too much, right? So there's those kinds of kind of concerns. Or perhaps it's, you know, my son's teammate who has ADHD, and needs to be constantly, constantly redirected, redirected two to three to four to five times per lesson. So if that teacher can't make it around for that redirection, well, maybe that student didn't get the amount of redirection they really needed, no fault of the teacher, right? But they didn't need that redirection, and if the teacher physically can't make it because there's too many, too many classes to put on the tables, right, just like waitressing tables, then that would cause a problem, that the student wouldn't get the same education that they would get if there was 20 kids in the room. Or what about my, you know, my son's, you know, friend from school, their classmate, and she's really timid, and she doesn't like to self-advocate, maybe she has social, emotional issues, and she doesn't want to self-advocate, and she can't say, you know, Ms., you know, Ms. Smith, I don't get it, can you explain it again? But if Ms. Smith happened to come around the second time, maybe she'd be like, oh, you know, I really didn't get this the first time you said it. So it's just that, there's nothing like, I, I mean, I don't know personally to give you examples, and I wouldn't really want to do that, because I think that would put the teachers in a difficult position to say, oh, you know, this happens in this room, and this is awful, right? And that's not what I'm here to say. I'm here to say that I know from my own personal experience that class size is everything, and that if you have a smaller class size, the, the education is going to be more meaningful, they're going to be able to make more connections with students, and there's no chaos in the room. I can't imagine the chaos the kids face every day, and when you have chaos, you've been doing a lot of work about social, emotional issues in this building, right? And when you're subjected to chaos all the time, how can you really focus on the learning? And especially for a student with ADHD who's like, what? What's happening over there? And what's over there? And a student, you know, teacher is trying to redirect this student, meanwhile, there's 15 kids behind him, but they still have to go back and redirect again, because it's just too many, too many kids in the room.
What is the number you think that we should have?
So, I mean, I think that's a general decision for you and the teachers, but for me...
How many here for you?
For me, 18 to 20 is a perfect class size. Honestly, when it gets smaller than 18, I call it a critical mass. You don't have enough energy in the room. For me, personally, I don't like classes smaller than 17, because it's just, there's no energy. Critical mass. But I would say 18 to 20 is the ideal size, if the teachers can manage the room and have a deeper sense of learning. And these teachers are great. I mean, I, they are great, like, so I can only speak, of course, for the teachers I've had experiences with, but Mrs. Salvo, I am like her number one fan. You can ask her. I only wish I could be half the teacher she is. And Ms. Anton, she used to differentiate from the kids, it was amazing, it was great. Like, this big class, if she was able to differentiate for those kids to have different learning. They've got classes of 26, how are they possibly supposed to be able to differentiate for all of those needs of those children? And then, Mrs. Wilson, I went into her classroom for doc and art, and those kids, despite them being packed in there on top of each other like sardines, the classroom management was perfect, absolutely perfect. I was amazed at the classroom management in her classroom. And then just a couple weeks ago, I went into Mr. Bees' room and taught a science lesson with him, and the kids were great, they were really great, and we were teaching, and where I was kind of falling, like, not really sure what to do, he stepped right in, he knew exactly how to teach the kids, he knew exactly what the kids' needs were, he was able to jump in without letting the, like, without losing them, you know, like, he could anticipate the needs of the kids. So they're amazing teachers, which is why you haven't heard from me before, because you're so lucky to have these great teachers who have been doing it. They've been doing it, and doing it, and doing it, but now it's been four years, and it's like, well, this problem isn't solving itself. And my concern also is that, and I could be wrong, the teachers would probably know better than me, but my impression, I'm a high school teacher, and my impression is that as the kids get older, they're less likely to want to please the teachers. So I think, I think, discipline will get worse as they get older, and that's my, also my concern, that as these kids are going to 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, they're going to be more difficult to manage, because of the behavioral issues in the room. So that's the other reason why I bring it up now. One, again, it just hasn't solved itself, so it's time to say, hey, why hasn't it solved itself? And again, I think that the school is wonderful, I've been so happy with everything about the school, and I'm a little disappointed that this issue hasn't been addressed, and disappointed for you to say, well, we didn't know this was a problem. Well, I don't think it's for us to tell you it's a problem, like, it's staring you in the face, there's, there's 24, 25, 26 kids in a room, and it's like the rooms are...
But apparently, though, we have very large class sizes come through this building before, and it has not been an issue of concern, quote unquote, okay? Like, we had a very large 6th grade class that just graduated two years, last year, two years ago, and, you know, it was manageable by our teachers, by our staff...
Was that cohort for seven years? I'm sorry? Was that cohort a large class size for all seven years?
I believe so.
Yeah, ranking, that's correct?
Yeah.
It was, I mean, but every year there's fluctuation, even this group is fluctuated, nine, nine or 10, one year.
So I mean, realistically, logically, if we were to hit that ideal benchmark for every classroom, you're, you're not talking about one teacher, you're talking about two, because you're talking about...
Okay, ask me what ideal would be...
The segment, the 3rd grade.
I'm not unreasonable, okay, ask me, ideal would be 18 to 20. I'm not asking for 18 to 20, I'm asking for it to be better than what it is. I'm asking for it to be better.
Right, but it's, if, if we, one of my, one of my concerns personally is if we, as a committee, as an administration, decide to go down that road, we can't just pick a grade level, it's got to be, every grade level has to have the same ratio, which means we're going to have to do it to two grades.
So why aren't you doing that now, then? Well, that doesn't make sense, like, what?
It doesn't?
You said you want every class to have the same ratio, but every class doesn't have the same ratio right now.
But they can't have the same ratio, because you don't have the same number of students.
Exactly. Right, so, yeah, so like at the high school, right? The students sign up for classes, and the numbers drive the sections. Why would the numbers of students drive the numbers of classrooms? The numbers drive the sections. So, I mean, the argument that if you do for one, you have to do for everyone makes no sense, because right now, you're not doing for one, you're not doing for the class of 2029. Their ratios are so far off, particularly...
They're relatively similar to the following class, the 2030, they're relatively similar, the class size.
If you'd like me to also talk about that class, I would gladly, but I'm trying to take, I'm trying to have a minimal sense...
Well, I'm saying, I don't think it's fair, fair, for us as a committee to say, we're going to make these accommodations for just this class, right, and not the other one.
But there's two different classes for children in the 2nd grade cohort.
And not like us taking a teacher away from our kindergarten class, you know, it's really, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying that it would be a concern of mine. I also know that when the children get into older grades, 5th and 6th grade, you, we've sort of departmentalized our classrooms, so you have teachers that teach math and writing, science and writing, social studies and writing, and English, English and writing, reading and writing? Yeah, so it's like, now, it's like a whole dynamic shift, right? Like, it's not impossible, I'm not saying that this request is impossible, but there are so many different moving pieces, you know, it's like, alright, now you're talking about two extra teachers, now you're talking about finding the classroom for these teachers. Now you're talking about shifting the dynamic in the upper levels, because it's balanced right now, the way that it is, it won't be balanced anymore. You know, it's like, it's not as simple as, here's an extra teacher, and let's build you a classroom, or put a pot in it, in the playgrounds, you know, like...
I know it's not simple, and that's why I haven't come here before, I'm not unreasonable, I know it's a big deal, but it's been four years, and it's not getting better, and it needs to be...
You mean it's not getting smaller?
We keep that in case we need it.
The class is smaller.
Or, right, the class size is not improving, and it's been four years, and now we're going on 3, 5, 6, and 7, and I feel that the issue needs to be addressed, and that's why I haven't been here yet. And yes, I also have a child in the class of 2030, and do I love those class sizes? No, but it's 2.5 less per class, that's a big difference. So I would love to see another teacher in that grade, dude, don't get me wrong, but I'm not unreasonable, I'm not unreasonable, I'm just trying to be here to do what's best for the children, right? We're all here.
That's why we're all here.
Right? So we're all here for that common good for the children, and I would love to see the issue that's been an issue for four years. The address? Mrs. King? Mrs. Kell?
Chairman Smiling, thank you. Good evening, committee. I have a son in 3rd grade, my son is on the spectrum, he has other issues, and I disagree with Ms. Townsend. And I think it's really selfish to say that the school committee and the administration hasn't ever said anything to the committee, because I've sat in this room when Mr. Broderie has brought the numbers to the committee, and has brought other reports, and it's said the school, this classroom size at this point isn't a large concern. My concern is though, who do we have retiring as teachers, where is the classroom going to come from? And as you stated, we need to address the other classes, because it would be extremely unfair of us as parents for the 2029 class, to be that selfish, is not to care about all the students in our community. And we have to remember that this town has a bunch of other needs, and we have been asked by FinCom to come in level funded this year, and that's almost impossible for the school to do anyways. And we also have to think about the improvements that Superintendent Blackwood and the regional school committee want to bring to our high school. Being, as a parent, I feel putting in the effort now to our high school and our vocational program and improving our trades is much more beneficial and a better use of my tax dollars for the older kids who will have a job when they graduate, won't have student debt, or face the other things that they're facing as a society now, than all we did was push college. And there is just so much to address, that it'd be better if we broke it down, and continued with more meetings as a whole school budget and what we can do, because we also have to realize that at town meeting, we're going to be asked for the Pat Towne Power Officer too. And Halifax is the only one in the region that's voted no, and that has to be added back into the school budgets too. This isn't a tiny piece, give me a classroom now. This is a regional school district that we have a group saying, we want this for our students only, and I'm a parent with a 3rd grade, I'm saying, it's not needed at this time. I've spoken to my son's teacher, I've been in the classrooms, the teachers do a wonderful job, and when they sit here and say, it's teacher to this many students, that's also not true. We have aides in the classrooms, so it's really two adult bodies employed by the elementary school in the classrooms, you know? It might be better to entertain if we want to add a paraprofessional, rather than just reducing the class sizes. And I really do want to stress that it's unfair to say that Mr. Broderie and the administration have never brought the numbers before the committee. Maybe the conversation didn't go the way some felt it should go, but it has definitely been addressed. We have to remember that as a community, it's not only the class of 2029 that matters. Thank you.
Do you want to go first? I know we all have our own opinions. Parent-teacher conference a couple weeks ago, one of my, two 3rd graders, one of the teachers said, we brought up a concern about my son not being able to pick up the new lessons, and he's struggling a little bit, so when we brought it to the teacher, the teacher said, we've got new curriculum, it's different than last year, he'll pick it up as we go, we have X amount of students that we have to get through, he'll catch up as we go along. No one's asking for 2029 to be, you know, put above everyone else, and this is just an example, because I don't know numbers myself, but just kind of even it out, and I understand it's going to change year to year, but if we can, you know, this year adjusts for this many, next year we got to adjust for that many, each class is different. So if I don't know what grade has 60-something students, and they've got four teachers, you know, maybe next year that same class has three teachers, and 2029, for an example, has five teachers, you know, that's not taking away from the students, that's just even the playing field out. And then, you know, each grade coming up, we can't predict it until the summer of, I don't want to see anyone having something taken away, but it just, you know, 2029 should have the same advantage as 2033, who has 60-something students. So I know each year will be different, and I know the money is tight, but my kid's education shouldn't be lessened, because we don't want to take from someone else, just even everything out, and it might take a year or so to figure it out, but at least bring it to everyone and say, hey, we have a problem, we need to work on a solution. And I get we can't just say, bam, we've got it, let's go, it takes time, but let's at least put it on the table and say, hey, how do we even things out? That's all I want to see. I want my kids to have the same advantage of my daughter's class two grades below, and if we got to adjust something, let's just adjust it, and we go from there. So that's my opinion, so...
I was just going to say, so if we decide to adjust it in that way, where we, if we take a teacher from kindergarten and move it, I mean, that's a Mr. Broderie and Mrs. Blackwood decision, that really, we don't really decide where the teachers are placed, you know, when teachers move from 2nd grade to 3rd grade, we, we don't ask that question, they, they just handle that on their own. We trust that they're doing the right thing for the benefit of all the students. So just keep that in mind too, that if that's where we, you decide, or we all decide as a group to go, that really doesn't involve us, that that's something that they can handle on their own, and they can make that decision if that's what they feel is best for the kids, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you very much for having the opportunity to address the committee. Steve Ruiz, Hallifax Teachers Association. So over the last two budget seasons, the school committee has invited the teachers to have input on the budget process, which is wonderful, we'd love to be a part of this process, to hear our perspective, but just wanted to kind of piggyback on some of the testimony by some of the parents that are here already tonight. We surveyed our members last year, and again this year. We provided to the committee last year by letter, the concerns that came up last year, and number one at the list, on top of the list, was class size for grades 1 and 2 last year. We had our survey again this year, that priority still remains at the top for this year's grade 2 and grade 3, it is still a typo on the paper that I handed out to you, that wasn't updated, I apologize for that. So all members, while not all involved in grade 3 and grade 2, felt, as a majority of our membership, 45 members, that addressing class size for the reasons that Mrs. Townsend eloquently described, I mean, I teach them all, so even though I have the luxury of the biggest classroom in the school, the gymnasium, I see all classrooms, I can tell you, I've been doing this job for 21 years here, yes... I can tell you, I've been doing this job for 21 years here, yes, we've had class sizes as big as 26 and 25, but not across the grade like grade three has. Grade two, we've seen that before, but I would say 25 for an average with one at 26, two at 25, one at 24, even in the gymnasium, it is a difference to see the amount of kids to come in, to make the connections with them all, make the rounds, handle behaviors. Just, you know, our job as teachers is to provide the best education for the kids. So as a union, we want you to know that the number one priority for your committee, and I do believe you have the ability to, you know, suggest what we do going forward, even though I'm sure you trust the leadership of our administration and upper administration. But as a school committee, you're the one sitting here that, you know, have a lot of ability in the direction we go forward, but class size is there. And I agree on behalf of the teachers that are here and that are out here, that 26, 25, that's high for what we're dealing with right now, equitable to the other grade levels. We would suggest you go bold and add a classroom teacher and not move from a classroom that is below. And the only reason I would suggest that to you with the tough fiscal restraints that you're going to be dealing with, I'm sure, is what a great opportunity for us to keep class size 20 or close to 20 and below. And in our primary grades, preferably K, that we stay below 20, give these kids the best chance they have. We are not a regional district at this level. We are the town of Halifax, Halifax Elementary School, K to six, so this is our environment. We have respect to what goes on at the regional level, but it's not here. Our job is to provide the best education possible, and we agree the class size is the number one factor that will provide a domino effect into everything. Making the rounds, making connections, discipline, behavior management, we deal with it, and we do well with it, but it would be better, obviously, if our class sizes were more equitable. So we would propose to add a position and not move.
Just one?
If this current town won, we understand that grade two currently going into third grade next year, um, we know that it's going to take a lot to pull off mine. So that's a start, but the direction would be. I mean, we were at a time in the school where there were five classrooms per, we had one year, we had six grade sixes and five for the rest, and we had oversight of 700 kids. So the building can handle it, the town can produce it, we've seen it, even though it's been 10, 15 years since we've seen that, who knows where it's going? I mean, if we have a big K that's coming in, enrollment, you know, we don't, we don't have the ability to move somebody. So we're suggesting that we look to add. Thank you.
If I may, first of all, thank you all. I hope you all come to town meeting too, because that's where we all really need to, is at town meeting on the floor when we're trying to get budgets through. So I've been here 14 years, and I think most definitely I will echo your comments. So there had been a bubble at one time, and Steve, do you remember what year it was? I can't remember where the bubble was.
Early 2000.
Okay, so at that time, we had a bubble, the large class, similar to what you're dealing with now, and we did move a teacher. Administration made a decision, and a teacher was moved, and it sort of followed the class. That can happen, it worked at that time. For those of you who wonder why that isn't simple, it, and I'm sure the teachers can all speak to this, it's more complex than you might think. It isn't that it isn't doable, but the reason why the teachers are supporting adding a teacher is, for moving a teacher, that means the teacher has to learn a curriculum of a different grade, classrooms have to be moved, because you keep the same grain in a pot, so people have to be moved. It is something that is complicated on many levels. Mrs. Townsend has been wonderful and really has advocated very strongly, and very impressed with you. Thank you so much. She's very patient, very kind. So to her point, she didn't ask earlier, because she's aware of the fiscal constraints on the town, I think Fred is still here, but honestly, the town has been pretty clear, level service. I mean, I mean, honestly, you would have trouble not understanding what they say when they say level service, and I know Gordon certainly speaks to that, because we've looked around and around, we use a lot of finance about it. So we've always tried to add a K. So this year, we have an unusual situation, right? The kindergarten class came in the lowest we've had in a really long time. None of us expected it, okay? So it was at 63, 64. We expected an extra 15 to 20 in August, because that has happened. You know, we were not expecting it to stay there. So the class was already broken into four. The issue is, and this is something I spoke to Mrs. Townsend about a little bit, when this class was in kindergarten, we had 94. When this class was in first grade, there was 92. When this class went into grade two, it was 101. This year, they are at 100. So in one year, there was a jump of nine. But what we need to do this year is for us to watch that kindergarten grade, see if the numbers stay the same, see if this third grade class stays the same, and towards the end of the year, make some sort of a decision as we're building a budget. If the committee, and I don't get a vote on the budget, if the committee chooses to advocate to add a teacher that is outside the budget, because that's the way the town of Halifax asks us to do it, I'll get you a second, I mean, she'll get you a second, Mrs. King, she's agile, I'm sorry. So it has to be outside the budget, because anything above level service has to be added above the budget, just so you understand that. But to your point, Mrs. Townsend, we do have an opportunity here where we have small kindergarten, but I don't know what will happen, what happens if grade three drops nine and it's the exact same number as grade two? And kindergarten goes up to nine or 10, because that happens. So right now, we are at a point that we are not making a recommendation, we are communicating. Prior to this year, there was not that opportunity to move a teacher. This is the first year that opportunity has arisen. The school committee gets a report every month from King, and it lists the class size. So we all are aware it was a bigger grade, but it is not that much bigger than we have had previously. We have had those, Kingston has had those, Plimpton has never had them, I can't imagine they ever will, but Plimpton actually has a pretty good sized kindergarten, man, 20 in the grade, but it's just a whole different world. So it isn't that it is that unusual. What I ask is that you give, as we're going through this year, and King and I have had some initial conversations, we'd like to try to move one of the paras from out of kindergarten, so there's another adult to help with it, to whoever, I think it was Mrs. King's idea is to hire a para. Currently, there is a paraprofessional for every grade level, so there already is a full-time para. There is a special education teacher for that grade level, so that's another set of needs. There are title one services for the grade level as well as meeting services. So it isn't just that one teacher to 25 kids all the time, okay? So there are some supports available there. I truly do not know if the town will be in a position to add a teacher. However, if the class sizes stay where they are, as this year progresses, I won't be here, but Dr. Prue and Mr. Broderie can continue the conversation and make a decision at that point if it makes sense for a teacher to be moved. The school committee are certainly, you know, they so chose to advocate to add a teacher, but again, it is something that the town has been pretty clear financially to us, and I honestly, I, I don't know that they would support it. There are many needs within this building. The union outlined a lot of them. It is difficult to say. Just moving a building forward is a percentage that is high for the county to accommodate without adding any staff, just because of union contracts, building maintenance, supplies, all those things get you pretty close to that number that the town struggles with as it is. So I really urge you to continue to advocate for the school. We really, really appreciate your support. Please come to town meeting. Honestly, we could use your help to get budgets through on all levels. And I, I don't disagree with what anyone has said, it's just having been a part of building a budget here for 14 years, honestly, it is extremely complex, and the town does the best they can to support all departments, and I'm just not sure that it would come to fruition, but it doesn't mean if we monitor the numbers that we can't look at, does it make sense for a teacher to be moved? So I guess I'm not sure how much time you wanted to go on with this, but...
I wish you went first.
I'm sorry.
No, but to...
I just wanted to reveal...
To Mrs. Blackwood's point, like, it is very important to state that, yes, we as a committee can say, alright, we're going to go against the wishes of the town, as they've requested financially, and add X number of dollars to our budget and hire an extra teacher, but then it doesn't end there. We have to go in front of the select, the finance committee, and then the town meeting body and fight for that position. And if you've been to town meeting, you've seen the Silver Lake budget be amended on town meeting floor, and it gets bought tooth and nail. It is, it is not a small feat, I'm telling you. So I, I just echo Mrs. Blackwood, I definitely appreciate you coming and expressing your concern, and please don't think that we're not going to be considerate of what you say, but you know, to Mr. Ruiz's point, like, everybody has a wish list, right? Everybody has a need list that they present to us, and all we can do is look at it and say, okay, how can we accommodate this the best way that we possibly can without exploding our budget? Because it's really a very, very complex issue. But I want to spend about five more minutes on this, and that's it, because we have a technology presentation tonight, we have a special ed presentation tonight, we are at the beginning of our budget conversation, which is very lengthy. So, Mrs. King, we're waiting to speak, and then Mrs. Townsend, and then King.
Thank you for recognizing me again. I see one of the ways the parents, the school committee, and the union can work together is with the legislator, because the way state aid is distributed to us in the Silver Lake Regional District is completely unfair, and I don't know if every parent here understands that. So that's one way that we can benefit our school as a whole and work together, and I don't think anyone would disagree with that fact. And secondly, if we want to talk about classroom sizes, if I'm not mistaken, Silver Lake Regional District and Halifax Elementary School is not school choice, we may want to stop looking into who's not a resident and town attendant Halifax Elementary School. You'll have a big reduction in class sizes.
I'm telling you, yeah. Oh, okay. I was sure you finished. Okay, so just to circle back around again, thanks for all the time. So I've heard that as far as re-appropriating teachers and moving a teacher is an in-house decision. So the school committee doesn't need to continue that conversation, but I hope that therefore, perhaps, the building administration and Mrs. Blackwood would be amenable to going forward with that in-house managerial decision. The only concern I've heard from them regarding making that decision is the what-if monster, right? What if we get an influx in the class of 2032 for next year? But we're not talking about what if, we're talking about what is. What is right now, what are our numbers, is that we have class size of 24 to 26 in class 32, so how would we deal with what is rather than what if? And if anybody should be saying, aren't against the what-if monster, shouldn't it be the class of 2032? Because what if there's an influx in that class? What if we have five or six more kids move into class of 2029? Are we prepared to have class sizes of 27, 28, 29 for that class? So I would really appreciate knowing that everything will be done to try to at least do the no cost, zero cost decision to re-appropriate staff so we can fix what if, not what if. And I did meet with Mrs. Blackwood and Mr. Broderie about this already, and they wanted your feedback, so that's why I came here tonight. I've also heard that Halifax Teachers Association asks to hire a new teacher, and that's another great choice, and perhaps the Plan A and the Plan B, which will fix the other concern that your only concern that you had was that, well, if we do for one, we'd have to do for the other, so it sounds like we've got two plans, and we've got two classes that need help. So therefore, your concern was smalling about, well, shouldn't we do something for the class of 2030 then? So sure, we could re-appropriate and hire a new teacher, and then your only concern about doing for all would be solved, and their plan and my plan, good work.
That's my concern, but thank you for pointing that.
I'm sorry, that's the only concern I heard, I'm sorry. I, that truly, honestly, I believe that's the only concern that I heard you mention, was that there would, I mean, financial, of course, but the only concern I heard as far as logistics would be that it would be fair to not do for all. And so there's two options, and we can do one for each class.
To be fair, she also brought up finding the space for them.
Oh, but sure we see...
In the older grades where we have, they have each teacher teaches one subject, so the restructuring as they get older.
Oh, sure.
She brought up all those things.
I'm just saying, those were other concerns. Those were addressed by Mr. Ruiz, so I didn't want to re-address them, saving time, right? So I certainly know that those were already addressed by Mr. Ruiz, and I don't have knowledge base about teachers wanting to move, but it seems to me that teachers support the idea, so that it's, you know, an altruistic feeling in the building that what's good for all, we could all make do, and we can all try to help each other and make those sacrifices for the benefit of the education of the kids. So, sorry, thank you.
No, no. Can you just, was there a sign sheet? No? We technically should have a sign sheet. I don't know, does anyone see this? Would one of you mind taking it back in the jetty of Mexico? I so apologize.
You definitely should have a sign sheet, thank you. This is for the official record.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry. Thanks, Steve. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Believe me, I sat on that side before I sat on this side, and I expressed my concerns very vocally. I came to things that I was passionate about, so I appreciate the fact. If you don't mind signing in real quickly for those of you that may be leaving, I certainly understand you are. Before we proceed in our agenda, and I know that it comes up later when we start talking about our subcommittees, and I probably should have said that at the beginning, at the beginning of the meeting, and I apologize, but I would just like to congratulate our new superintendent, Dr. Phil Prue. Joy Safdie is retiring and leaving us, but it was a thrilling job to go through the search to hire a new superintendent, and I think Robert, please have you report. So welcome. And I apologize if I gave you a shout-out before.
No, I'm thrilled to be joining the community as a teacher and a student. It's been a wonder, three years now, so we won't be forward to many more.
Excellent. Minutes from our October meeting. Everybody should have a copy. And if anybody doesn't have any amendments to them, we need a motion to... Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants are circulating, please have. And Bob, did you go and assign single warrants?
He did. Bob came to our office, he signed 13 warrants, so $472,890.29, basically.
Most money I ever spent.
School committee correspondence and reports, I did receive a couple emails in support of the conversation that we just had, but aside from that, I don't have anything additional. Stupid warrant files out later. We said no, really, no place for it, right? Let's, let's talk more in the budget session. Perfect. Um, unfinished business, I'm taking a chat now on unfinished business. The last thing to have was the bus situation, but it was, it seemed to be cruel on. But I like it.
Just one follow-up?
Yeah.
Contract? Will we talk about that in the budget session? Sure, okay.
I'm just making it up to my friend. Fred, you want to jump? Yeah, let's, let's just, we'll do it right before the subcommittee, so if you're in, I'm gonna, obviously, the conversation we just had will be rolled into the budget conversation, I think, in terms of our, our piece of it, like we've dated before, I think the administration has pretty significant say in how the logistics of our handle for the term. in how the logistics of it are handled from the term of the budget. I think we can continue that conversation there. Yes, if it is okay with everyone else, can we move the budget conversation? So wait a minute, though, do we need Steve Powell's presentation first? Before we...
I just assumed you wanted to give the cap.
Sweet, okay.
Do you have a meeting credit seven?
No, no, I basically have been assigned the liaison from the FinCom to the school committee. So this is my first meeting with you. Just so, I'll be attending all the meetings just to listen to you, what's going on, just so that I can take whatever you're looking at as a budget and bring it back and we can talk about it, so.
Okay.
I'm neutral. It's like whatever, I mean, whatever you guys come up with, you come back, you come up with. I'm just gonna go back and say, this is what, this is why they're presenting this. And then we're still gonna call you in and say, or give explanations as to why you want X amount of money.
So did you plan on hanging out for a little bit tonight? Okay, so then I think we'll leave it. Because we're gonna have the special ed presentation, which obviously is gonna have budget impacts. And the technology presentation is gonna have budget impacts. And then we have another agenda item that's gonna be... Yeah, so just hang tight, hang out. Nice, that was very thoughtful.
I'm scared everybody else will ask.
Hey, I sat on that side too.
Yeah, I don't want your job. I'm happy here.
Which one?
His selectmen's. I don't want anything to...
Okay, so subcommittee's policy. We are due to have our second reading. We're all leaving that Allison, like, you're a grown girl. So is waive the actual reading, approve the second reading?
Alright, so I make a motion that we waive the actual reading and approve the second reading of policy IKFBA, IMG-1, JV, and JLCD.
Okay, second.
Second.
Don't be good at this, you're always gonna have to do this, Allison.
I know.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. No, she didn't, she didn't all the ones.
Yeah, she didn't waive and approve. She was, she was... Negotiations.
So we met...
Who went to the same presentation?
Well, we met, we were the fellow professionals and then we had...
Okay, okay.
We met briefly. The only thing I have is if anybody would like to see their annual report, I have a copy of that. But they are actually canceled their next two readings because they are moving their administration buildings. The Pilgrim Academy building is... So I won't have meetings for a while. Yeah, I see. But I have my annual report, anybody that's...
Boots and rec, you have my notes, very fancy.
Official notes.
Yeah, official notes. So I spoke with Mr. Steele. And he, as usual, would like to thank the building administration for their cooperation in the after-school programs. They've added an additional after-school program. So currently, we have art, sports, STEM, and games. Is that the one, Mr. Blackwood?
I think so, it's in the works.
In the works, okay. The after-school programs are very popular. He said enrollments like upwards of a couple hundred kids, he thinks. And he just thinks it's fantastic that the teachers are participating in the after-school, I mean, are running the after-school program. So it's not just like a babysit, these are his words. It's not a babysitting session. These children are like learning, they're actively engaged. The kids love it, the teachers love it. So he's just very grateful for the cooperation of the faculty, staff, and the teachers as well. Winter is coming, which means basketball season is gonna kick into full gear. Travel teams are getting organized and town basketball. On December 14th is the holidays and lights, the holidays in Halifax Fair that they do in the gym, all purpose room? One of them? Think they use blocks?
All over.
All over, but in terms of the rec, in this building, they have their, yeah. Their program there. There is a dance for the fifth and sixth grade Friday the 13th. Doors are at 6:30, music is at 7:00. Nine o'clock pickup, $8 a ticket at the door. He said they're in preliminary conversations about a Gaga pit or something like that?
Yeah, he is.
Gaga ball, okay. He's like wicked excited about it. And he explained it to me that it's a pit and the game is kind of like dodgeball, but like not as physically aggressive. You're all over it?
Yeah, we annually have that at Field Day.
Yes, that's what I heard.
So the kids are exposed to it. The Y program from, I believe, East Bridgewater comes in with it and rents it to us and actually volunteers to run it for us. And it's a, it's a big hit with the kids.
Yeah, so I think they're talking about like putting in a pit in the back to, to, like, keep it.
Build one.
Yeah, build it. And so that's pretty exciting.
I'm not sure if he was talking to CTE at all or something, but I know he was, he approached us and we were like, game's great.
Right.
We love it. And I know Mr. Ruizie, you know, has it here at Field Day. It's right behind the snack shack by the field right to the left.
I thought you'd heard it from here, this one isn't heard.
Is it basketball?
It's similar.
It's a low-level striking game that involves handball, hitting them, using a ball, like a handball, it's striking below the waist. So it's a fast-moving game. It's, um, it's just fun, kids love it. And it's common at camps, a lot of camps, they'll run it. And the Y still has it in their... Is the Y, the Y camp down at Cape, there's one. And it's probably like a three or four, waist-high, three or four feet high. And then you put everybody in it and I think there's one or two balls. Like, then you just like kind of roll it around and then you get hit, you get out of the pit. Last person standing.
This is different from like whipping it out of the pit.
You don't throw it, it's like...
Strike it.
It has to be long, it has to be high or...
You can not wrench, you can not ball. Yes, he said, you know, he's preliminary talks, wants to potentially get it installed in the spring. And the other thing he mentioned is they've done lots of cleaning in the back, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, and they cleaned up the shed back there and everything. So, yep, that's the update on rec. I'm also the PTO supporter tonight because Alex was not here and he did send me an email regarding the meeting he attended. PTO, I'm at Wednesday, November 20th, in the all-purpose room. Main topic of discussion was the breakfast with Santa, which is coming up Summer 14 from 8:30 to 11:30. There's crafting night on December 5th, which is in need of volunteers. He mentioned that Ellen had sent out a notice on November 22nd with the sign of genius link for parents and volunteers to get involved. There was a couple of small allocations for teacher requests and there was a discussion, oh yeah, about the Gaga pit. Then he talked about the budget meeting, but I'll wait for you to give an update on that. But basically, right now, their big thing is the breakfast with Santa. So they really need volunteers for that. Capital budget, we haven't had that conversation. We should kind of like go across the street and have that at some point. Admin review, hasn't formally met, but Union 31 met with the Silver Lake Regional School Committee last week, two weeks ago, for three nights in a row, very late nights. Lots of conversations about hiring a new superintendent. And as I mentioned, our candidate and nominee, I guess, most way to put it, is Dr. Jilthru, so we're happy to have her on. And I guess that means we all have to get to work and now we're gonna hire a assistant superintendent. So it's a little, it's a little bittersweet, but... And then Mr. Boudreaux, you're up.
Alright. Is it even yet? Right now, enrollment's at 587. We've gone up and down a little bit over the last month or two. And we have, this year, I think this is the third year, year three, that Sandy Henrich, who's former speech pathologist here, has provided us with another $20,000 donation. So in total, it's been $60,000, $20,000 for each year. We just wanted to make sure that we recognized her. And we've got to talk with the union and see how we best use those sorts of students and staff.
Can I just put a separate question?
Sir? Um, there, hi.
The November PD Day we had on voting day, thanks to everybody who made that all happen. We've had voting here in the past. It's just, it's really a difficult day to kind of have students in the building. It wasn't a huge voting day, but just for us here, staff, the students, it was just great to be able to have that professional development day.
Which is crazy for the gym teacher, that.
And then, so on that day, we were, for the most part, the elementaries, I don't need to sell you a hundred jokes.
I'm not presenting tonight, so...
Okay, good. So the majority of the elementaries was over at Denne, where we focused on our math curriculum that, our new adoption. So we had Dr. Nikki Newton who presented, who was well-known in the math world. She did a short stint in the morning time. And then while the other group was working with Pearson that was talking to us about our new math curriculum. So that was kind of the gist of that, that day. Then afterward, there are other breakout groups, like our specialists. They collaborated with other specialists across the district so that they were able to plan in the special ed. Our parents were at a train. So it was a great day to kind of cover everything. I know I didn't hit all of it, but just to kind of touch base on the PD Day, lots of good feedback. So we look forward to keeping that feedback going. And Mr. Ruizie, I can't do it justice here. You're 21st Annual Turkey Trot. So you want to take it over? It's like, this is like an event that happened, has been happening. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful piece for the students. It's a wonderful piece for the staff and the families that all come out. And it's, it's just, it's great to see how everybody comes together for that day. I know Steve is, is basically the one who orchestrates all these moving parts. And it all just falls together so nicely. And I'm not, I know I'm not doing it justice, but it's just, he does so much work behind it. From, you know, we contact PTO to getting the PTO volunteers out there. We're watching the weatherman and making sure the weather's gonna work with us. We make sure that the police is involved in terms of traffic. Our custodians are helping set up. Nazrallah gives us apples. It's really, it really all comes together so nicely. And the students for the whole month long are bringing in donations. And it just, it ties it nice and sweet. Steve, if you can, if you want to add to it, it's...
It's an event that I've enjoyed doing. The way we are doing it now wasn't the way it started. Was a new teacher that wanted to bring something new to the school. It was a voluntary activity that kids signed up to do in the afternoon. And it was a cross-country run. And if they had won, they all earned a turkey. That's how it started. And kind of changed when I had a student one day say to me, you know what? I want to donate one turkey to the food bank. I said, wow, that's pretty cool. So from that year forward, all the turkeys that we would get donated from Stop and Shop at the time, and since then, it's been donations from parents and businesses in the community to purchase turkeys. Based on that student enlightening me, we now donate them to our food pantry. Leslie Russo, who was our longtime office secretary, she always coordinated the food pantry food drive here at the school. So towards her end, we then combined the two. So now it's an event that we have all our kids do during the school day, not just voluntary after-school. And the emphasis is put on, obviously, physical activity, but it is our school community, and we're very proud of that. So kids across all of our skill sets are encouraged to do it. And for the most part, they all do do it. And kids cheer them on, it's a good sense of pride for our school. We're very proud of the donations that we get from our school community to give to the food pantry as well. So thank you, Mr. Boudreaux, for those kind words on that. And we'll continue doing it.
Just work that, thank you. Steve said so, but glad you were here, Steve.
I didn't know that, all the turkey situation. That's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Like I said, there's so many parts to it that just come together. It's just, it's fantastic. And we had a relocation drill back at the end of October that was coordinated with police, fire, and church. And so that is something that, you know, we're working on each year. I think it wasn't, we didn't do one last year, but we did one the year before, which is where, you know, we, we actually went into a lockdown and then we provided teachers with, obviously, practice to relocate to the church. It was all done in under 30 minutes. Where we head over onto the church, walking down 106. The police, the fires, they all help us get across and down there. So that's, the big challenge is getting out of the building, down the street, into the different parts of the church where we can't all fit in one spot. I don't know if anyone's ever been in the basement and all the little rooms over there. But in the great hall, it is kind of a challenge to be in the different rooms in that, in that place. And then to get all 587 students accounted for is a pretty daunting challenge. But everybody steps up to the plate and it was fantastic. So I can't thank everybody enough for all their help in doing it. But it's good to have, it's good practice that we do. So we plan, we usually try and along with fire drills, relocation drills, lockdown drills, we kind of make sure that that's something that we do throughout the year. So it becomes kind of interesting, right? Because we've always been just comfortable with doing fire drills. So it's automatic now, but even now, it'd be some of these relocation drills. We want that morning break in our students and staff so they can have all the information they need.
How fortunate we are that we have multiple links right on the street. But again, none of the other schools have. Yeah, that's a whole other one.
It's great, and it can definitely hold more than our 587. Plus, I think it's built, but it's definitely a room for me. We've had four grade levels in the great room there. Something like that. And then to the little kitchen on the side there, the little banquet hall there, we had two grade levels, the first and sixth grade. And then in the basement, we had kindergarten and all the little rooms down in the basement. So it worked out fantastic.
I was there on the following Sunday and nothing was that place.
That's good. Just a couple of dates upcoming. We have our Thanksgiving break, 28th and 29th, half-day on Wednesday. Lunch is served, 12 o'clock dismissal. Monday, the 9th, term one report cards are issued. Thursday, the 12th, we have our Lincoln concert in the age, yes, June at 6:00 p.m. And then the 14th, we have our Breakfast with Santa, the holidays in Halifax. And then on the 23rd, we start our holiday break.
Can I ask a question about the Wednesday before? Is breakfast served that day? And it was...
Which?
On the Wednesday before?
Thanksgiving, like this Wednesday? Yes, breakfast is served.
Question for later, I just wanted to have that answered.
I know it's, it's definitely served. I'm not sure if it's like a hot lunch or if it's cereals, granola bars, and fruit. It's, there's something, there's definitely breakfast served. Because that's been something in the past that we've always wanted to make sure that we had, even though, because our cafeteria does not work when those, we have a couple of half-days where noon dismissal, there's no lunch served. And typically, our cafeteria staff does not work over the years. But since we've had breakfast served, we make sure that on those 12 o'clock, 12 o'clock noon dismissals, no lunch, we do have breakfast on Monday.
So you throw on a make-uper in the hairnet?
There we go. Steve pulled it up. Cereal, yogurt, fruit, cheesesteak.
So does the cafeteria workers come in those?
Uh, not all of them. I believe they prepare everything as much as they can the day before. And then one of them will come in and set it all up and be there. Like, I think it throws Turner, who's always the one that comes in. Like, I think it throws Turner, who's always the one that comes in.
Awesome. Thank you. Financial support available. There's one line that's in the PTO list. I just wanted to bring back special education section. We have prepared to the surplus in both contract and service transportation. Right now, special education is reflecting a deficit of a financial two hundred and nine thousand. That is before the impact of cert breaker. Once our cert breaker comes and received in a bond, that would be a surplus. And then, this surplus, now, if you go make sure, right now, about twenty-seven thousand. Excellent. Please go on. Well done. Hope we have opened to the budget.
And that only covers tuition, right?
This year.
And then, in any, I mean, we may have a new balance we could carry over to the following year. So, this year, we're going to start everything from last year, and then, we need additional slots. Any else? Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Transportation, is that? Special ed?
Oh, then it's supposed to be. Special education transportation has a surplus of sixty-one.
And it was muted in case.
Also, supporting time, based on the population, it's still, we will be cleaning it up.
And that's after the increased cost of transportation.
For the sixty-four thousand includes the current EI situations that have been accounted for.
Why do I continue?
Sorry, that's right. Steve, I got to finish up. Well, that's very great.
All right, so we've got a morning break. Well, who is our special ed director?
Well, thank you for having me back again. If you enjoyed coming in and doing some education for us.
Good job, it's a good. Okay.
So, as we move forward, like you came to put me in. There's quite a generation that has absolutely no idea.
Thank you.
So, as I begin every year, I just like to start with a basic overview of what special education is, and then, we will talk more specifically about the special education programs and statistics specific to how the back study overview of all the communities. But when we talk about, when we talk about special education, what that truly means, we're looking at, looking at specially designed instruction to meet the needs of individual students. And we are working with students from age three through twenty-one, or up to their twenty-second birthday. And we look at students prior to turning three. We actually have notification from our early intervention agencies when students are two point six, two point nine, in a transition for their third birthday, so that we make sure that that transition from EI to our integrated preschool is seamless. And it really does run seamlessly. We have home visits, we have communication with EI, we have a complete evaluation of our students prior to their third birthday, and we are able to present that IEP placement to that child on their third birthday. So, when we talk about special education, as I said, we're talking about making sure that we have provided equal access to learning for all of our students, our students with disabilities and our students without disabilities. And sometimes, we, we talk about the concept of equality versus equity or fairness. And I think that this slide is a really nice picture of a reminder of what we're talking about when we use those words. So, for equity for statements, for example, I could give everyone the exact same accommodation, but that doesn't always play out fairly for everybody. So, I think you can see in this picture, we've allowed for all three of these children to have the exact same accommodation to seal the fence. We've given them each the same size, same height box. That's equal, right? Everybody got the exact same thing. But is it fair? Because we still haven't addressed the concern in that all three children cannot seal the fence, correct? So, when we look at fairness, when we look at making sure that our strategies and our accommodations are unique to the individual needs of students, you can see that we've actually given this child no box to stand on. So, the second child, just one. And the third child, two boxes. So, now, all three have that opportunity to seal the fence. All right? So, there is a distinction when we talk about equity versus equality. And I just, I think it's just a nice visual image that sort of captures what we're talking about with that type of issue. When we talk about, as a team, how we get to that point of determining what is fair and reasonable and appropriate for that individual student, there are very many people that are part of that conversation. We start first and foremost with the student. Once the student turns fourteen, at age, that student is considered a formal member of that team process, and they are invited to the team meetings. Once they turn eighteen, all rights and responsibilities of their special education services transfer to that student. They can wish to delegate it, they can wish to keep all that decision-making authority for themselves, or they can share it with another team member, like a family member or parent, so forth. But that's due to formal number of the team process at age fourteen. Also, part of the team, we have our new education teachers, who are our experts in the content and curriculum. We have our special education teachers, who are the experts in terms of how they break down that material and how they make that information accessible to students with disabilities. We have our parents, who are the experts of their children. We have school representatives. The team chairperson is the one that we can assign to have the authority to commit resources, district resources, and probably, community agencies. Some of our students are involved with the Department of Developmental Services, or the National Research Commission. So, a lot of those outside agencies also come and participate in our team meetings. Sometimes, we have outside evaluators, and we have our own school evaluators, our school psychologists, and our OTPT speech therapists that provide evaluations that work toward the process of determining what the needs are for the child. When we talk about who qualifies for an IEP, I think some of you that have been here the last couple of years have seen this slide before, but I think it's important to revisit this. The state of Massachusetts, when you win IEP, there are still other questions that need to be asked in the desert, which is on the next slide. So, this is actually, it's an awful picture of it, but this is one of the forms, the formal state forms, that the team goes through to determine whether or not a child qualifies. And the questions are going to be on my next page, but as I just showed you the list of qualifying disabilities, that's what's listed right here. So, you can see, that's just part one, okay? And then, the team goes through the rest of the flow chart. So, the rest of the flow chart, as it said, does the child have one or more of the following disabilities, and if so, what type? Is the student making effective progress in school? If the student is not making effective progress in school, is the lack of progress the result of the disability? Because sometimes it can be, sometimes it may not be. Does the student require specially designed instruction or related service like PT speech, OT, in order to make effective progress in school? Once you go all the way down that flow chart, then and only then, can the team embark in the process of developing that IEP. Any questions? So, here's the fun part. So, I've been collecting data, I think, you know, for as long as I've been here, I've been adding the data for you. So, I'm trying to capture the information that I think is most informative to you. But if at any point, you're curious about a different aspect of the data, I'm happy to create that slide for you and present that to you. So, if I'm not capturing everything that you're looking for, or that addresses your questions, by all means, please let me know, and I can expand the information I'm sharing.
And the baby, so how long does that process take you to go through, or a week?
That's a great question. So, once we receive a referral from a parent, once we have signed consent to embark on the evaluation, we have a total of forty-five school days to complete the evaluation. The first thirty school days, we have to focus on the actual evaluations, to conduct the evaluations. The remaining fifteen days, that's when we look to do the actual reports, to get all of the data pulls together. And we must meet with that family prior to the forty-fifth day and make a determination as to whether or not we're being moving forward with development of an IEP. So, the entire process, start to finish, is forty-five school days. It's a great question.
How often do you have to update each of those?
So, an IEP is updated annually, at least annually, all right? But you can recommunuate the team at any point if there are any concerns, if there are any changes, additions, additions to the services that are present in the IEP. So, you can recommunuate the team at any point, but annually is the same requirement. In terms of a reevaluation, that happens once every three years. So, every three years, the team takes a moment, we take a step back, and we reevaluate a child to see if they are still, remain eligible to continue services. Because again, we're talking about whether or not they have documented disability. The disability isn't necessarily going to go away in three years, but perhaps with the remediation that we've provided over the course of three years, they don't necessarily need the level of service that we did provide for them three years prior. So, that's another state requirement for every three years. You can do it sooner, if there are new circumstances, any reasons why we want to reexamine the child through that lens. Any other questions on that? Okay. So, looking at it from a regional perspective, and the numbers that I have used for all of these charts are from the October one reports, so we have the numbers of our enrollment. So, this is an overview of the students receiving special education services from a regional perspective. So, for the town Halifax, you can see from FY sixteen to FY twenty, initially, we currently have a hundred and thirty-three students within the town Halifax that have been identified as students with disabilities and are receiving services via IEP. So, this is, if you remember the earlier chart, when I showed you all of the different classifications that one could be deemed eligible or having a disability in. So, here they, here they are again, all of the different classifications. So, if you look at Halifax, you can see that there are twelve students in Halifax that are from eligible for an IEP with a primary disability noted as autism. They could have a secondary disability, but this is noting what their primary disability is, okay? So, this is the Robson Halifax, you can see, yeah, a hundred and thirty?
Clearly, you're always welcome to be at any of our school community meetings, but since you brought this board tonight, I just want to make sure we have any lingering questions before we move on. Good?
So, one of the things that I had down, and we talked about this last year, is increasing the substitute rate of pay. So, the minimum wage is going up seventy-five cents a year, and twenty twenty.
Students in the town Halifax that have been found eligible for services for an IEP, and this is a breakdown by the categories. Obviously, specific disability is one of the higher categories. Communication impairment is a very high category, and development delays is a very high category. Any questions with those numbers? So, now, we're looking at, is that the next one? That one.
That one, sorry.
That's okay. Again, it's getting a little bit. So, what I've done here for you is to show you the breakdown of our students with disabilities by the types of placements that they have. So, within the building here, Halifax Elementary, we have currently eighty-eight students receiving services. We have eighteen little ones over at preschool, so they'll be coming into the bridge and nursing. You have eleven students, Halifax students, that are in our substantially separate programs and listed. You have sixteen students that are currently in out-of-district placements. So, please note, when you look at these numbers, the hundred and thirty-three, that spans students from kindergarten through age twenty-two, okay? So, the one thirty-three, that's kindergarten through age twenty-two. Because we have district students that are middle school and high school, still come back to the town of Halifax from a budget perspective. And then, another chart, which I'll show you later. Any questions about that?
Three, three, twenty-two, right, which is preschool.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Joe, because preschool here is the eighteen, so that's three.
Yes. So, the eighty are in FY twenty, are in house?
Yes. Yes. So, I've done similar charts for Plinton and Kingston, and I can certainly go through those for you live, but I don't really, because this is Halifax. But they are in your packets, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those for you as well. So, this just, what's this? Oh, so I want to highlight two things for you to listen. So, again, and I just pointed out to you, there are sixteen students currently from Halifax that are placed out of district, right? I passed the Plinton and the Kingston chart, but I'm happy to review those with you for your life. Oh, this is the slide I added.
Okay.
This is the slide I added, though. So, as I said, there are sixteen students that are currently out of district for the town of Halifax. You can see that that number has gone down. But I also wanted to show you the totals of our out-of-district students throughout the region. I asked, because I'm really happy about it. I thought seventeen had seventy-three students placed out of district. We next for you. Yes.
Kind of a rhetorical question, but I think it's worth noting that, I understand that, like, special education students fluctuate, so that's part of the number, but also part of the number is bringing a lot of programs into the district?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's exactly what this chart highlights. It highlights really the creation and expansion of our in-district programs that have allowed us to appropriately support our students in district. Yes. Because I'm really happy about it. Any other questions on that chart? Okay. So, this chart just shows a little bit of the overall funding for out-of-district tuitions and transportation. Again, I just want to give that historic background, just going back to FY sixteen. Yes, I have FY fifteen, too, but I'm running out of room, so I have to drop the facility here to give you the most carried facility here. But basically, when you look at the tuitions and transportations from FY nineteen to FY twenty, I think when you add both lines up, it was an increase of two point two six percent. So, nothing too significant there, which I'm pleased about. And I'm in the process of preparing my budget presentation for Joy for FY twenty-one.
When you begin healthcare, those special needs, do you see the students that you're bringing in at a much, I guess, just for the audience, would see things that average offset things, when you take a student out of district places?
Sure. Awesome, great question, yeah. So, an average out-of-district tuition would start, I'm going to say, high forties, low fifties. Low fifties, I would say, is a starting point these days. The. The in-district programs that we've been able to create, the tuition's range a bit, what you'd average, I would say they're twelve to fifty thousand dollars per student. So there is certainly a sizable financial savings there.
And the town's responsible for the first forty-five-ish thousand dollars now?
So that's the circuit breaker, and there is a slide.
Program.
Yes, the town is responsible for meeting the foundation, and it was forty-five something. And then, we get reimbursed for every dollar above that, we get a certain percentage of that back. It's been roughly averaging with the seventy-two.
Those things.
But you could possibly save that very five thousand dollars on student placement, because the tax doesn't have the whole cost and the little disposable stuff.
Correct.
And it's a huge savings per student.
And that's just our tuition without transportation for debt?
Correct. Correct, and clearly there's huge savings with transportation, and that's ready for students to help to register, all of those stuff. Any questions on that slide? Because the next one is, so this year's out-of-district last foundation was forty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-two. So, basically what I do is I will get all of the students that are placed out of district and tally up all of their tuition costs. I then need to take out of consideration the first forty-five thousand dollars that is absorbed by the communities, by the towns. And then, as I said, every dollar above that is part of the claim or argument. So of the one-point-five million last year, the net claim was seven hundred thousand, so the circuit breaker reimbursement is five hundred and forty-two thousand. And then leave the next slide, it's an actual example of what that looks like. So, this is an actual student tuition residential, so it's very high, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for this particular student. When you subtract foundation, the net claim is one-seventy-nine, and then with, by estimated, a low potential return of sixty-five percent, that's a return of maybe sixteen thousand. So the actual impact for a student that is in a residential program, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is actually hurting. Does that make sense? To help offset some of our costs, we do have two grants that we can tap into. And one of them is the two-forty grant, and this year for the town Halifax, we received a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. Now, you can see the total allocations across the region on the bottom of the screen there. The primary allocation for the two-forty grant has been to help offset the salaries of our paraprofessionals that are directly with our students. So that helps tremendously with the local operating budget. It's ninety-sixty-nine thousand dollars close to that would have been paid for a staff that I can sort to that two-forty for you. Yes.
Is that paraprofessional specifically in this building, or is that for a Halifax student throughout the three twenty-two?
So, oh, that's an excellent question, only in this building.
Okay.
Yes, that's a really great question. Yes, so the one-sixty-nine is what I purposely target to support the students here in this building. It is not targeting the students that already have this, or this, or another grant. Yes.
As the grant money seems to not increase over time?
It's a plug.
I'm worried.
Delivery's everything.
Where do we see the increased cost of the budget?
So, Joy and I talk about that every year, Christine and I talk about it every year. The entire one-sixty-nine is not all towards salaries. We pull some of that to help support other areas, for that very reason. And every year, we have conversations as to whether or not maybe one parent or the second parent should go back into the operating budget, local budget, so that we do have enough sustained power and that we're not hurting the local budget too much. So it's very delicate. So we just look at those across the board, and look at the bottom line grant numbers, and we make the best decisions that we can to make sure that we can find anything we need.
If students still need like a one-to-one, and they have a parent or a teacher with them all the time, where is that, is that not from this grant allocation? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
I know, sorry, what were you trying to say? If we can absorb it in this, and the grant, we do, if we cannot, then it's an additional special education charge that might fall on your tuitions, for example?
Also, I was wondering, like, if a child has an out-of-district placement in a program, but also requires that one-to-one, is that part of their overall tuition expense?
Yes, yes. And I can apply that additional cost to the circuit breaker.
Okay.
So when I do the total amount, say that we have a child that goes to card pushing, and that tuition is eighty thousand, and that particular student has a one-on-one, and that adds another twenty thousand, say, then my entire circuit breaker claim for that particular child is now eighty thousand. Very simple, yeah. It's the basic numbers. Makes sense, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can I ask a difficult question to that one, Laura?
Absolutely.
What happens if there's benefits associated with that position? Where do we capture those?
That also is captured.
So we have a liability under the special ed program?
Do you mean to the parents that would be covered under the grant, or parents out of district?
I guess for the in-house, the ones that were providing benefits for them, where the cost is being subsidized by the grant.
Great, great, for the benefits. Grant pays benefits, doesn't it?
Okay, but the grant's not covering the whole liability under the program. So subtract that.
Helping, like.
Would that be, I guess, not the one I'm looking at right now? Is that person within the elementary school's budget? If it's a parent that's being paid for it in house, are we capturing that liability somewhere?
The open liability, is that the issue?
Yeah.
The potential of those future costs? You are calculating that right online, so like for a pat behavior, right?
Yeah, I don't put any of the town Halifax.
Yes.
I just didn't know if it was a separate, because the funny thing is, is there, I just didn't know if we're capturing that, or we should be capturing that at the town level for that, in the case. So I guess my question's going to be to say, how are we capturing that liability?
How do you do that, other employees?
Well, we would just, if there's an employee that's receiving a benefit from operating, then they would be covering under the open auto.
One thing I should say, most of these employees cover, they're a similar-like employees. So they're not employees of the town Halifax. Okay, good question.
Sorry?
No, that's fair.
We'll be needing one.
So two-forty is certainly a sizable grant. Two-sixty-two is much smaller. Two-sixty-two is designed to support our students in preschool program ages three through five. As you can see, this is a very small grant that has been cut in half just over the last three years to four years. So I'm not optimistic that this is a grant that's going to sustain a lot of life as we move forward. At the moment, this grant is helping to fund some of our needed services, like the TPT, speech, so that's how we're choosing to spend what little money we have for as long as we have it. So, I think I've shared with you before just an overview of the different programs that we are able to support in Silver Lake Regional. We have very outstanding programs, we have very outstanding staff members that are at the helm of these programs. The first profile of the program is our Development and Learning Center, and we have that program in our elementary preschool. We have a regional program, a KEMKI. We have a program in middle school, a program in high school. We have our newly developed Pathways program for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students that's based out of high school, but they're really just based out in the community. They do so much wonderful work, I don't actually highlight until the end of the presentation. And the profile of students in that program are students with disabilities such as intellectual, neurological, significant developmental delays, some autism spectrum profiles, students. We also have a structured learning center, or therapeutic learning center, for students that struggle with more of the social-emotional skills. We have a strong program at KES, and another strong program in the middle school. The language-based program is still relatively new for Silver Lake. I think we started that a few years ago, I think. And that is based at the Kingston Intermediate, and we also have an expansion of that program in the middle school as well. So, that's just an overview of the three different programs, and this is just a fancy little picture to show you who they are. So, we can just keep going. Thank you. So, I did add a short video clip for you that just talks about programming for special education students in a strength-based approach, and why it is so important for us to look at programming that is all-inclusive, that is within our public school settings. So, it's short, it's fine. Forty years of research tells us that they're unacceptable adult outcomes, and that we're doing completely the wrong thing. So what am I talking about? I'm talking about the nationally accepted practice of segregating kids with disabilities in self-contained classes for some or most of their school day. So now, why is this a problem? Well, think about when you learned how to drive. If you're like me, you started in a parking lot, went to busier streets, eventually get a new license, and at some point, you could, if you wanted, fly to Europe, rent a car, drive on the opposite side of the street, all successfully. Because we've practiced those skills across places, and people, and settings. So why on earth is it that we force people to learn in a parking lot and then expect upon graduation to not be shocked that they have to have someone paid to be with them? See, there's no magic in those classrooms. The magic is in the belonging, it's in the relationships, it's in the abundance of the communities. Nothing compares to the education that a person can receive side-by-side with their peers. I've worked in this business for over twenty-five years, and if there's one thing I know, is that the more complex a kiddo is, the more I believe the following. If we want to truly know what success looks like, we have to understand one simple fact. We must create a new norm, where we think, talk, write, and act in strength-based ways. When we focus on what a person can do, on the dreams they have, on the passions they hold, then we can know what success looks like. Meet Cooper. Cooper is one of the funniest kids I know, and he will steal your heart like nobody's business. The first time I met Cooper, he was self-contained one-hundred percent of his day in special education, and had been since kindergarten. That first day, I watched him use fake money to buy a fake slushie in a pretend Target. And if you do the math, that's an awful lot of fake slushies. Now Cooper's included one-hundred percent of his day in a general education setting with all of his eighth-grade peers. The only problem that we're having now is keeping up with how much he knows. And we're doing pretty well, we're leveraging technology and making sure that we have a consistent way for him to communicate, despite the fact that he's mostly non-verbal. Every part of his day looks just like everybody else's, including if he feels like being late for class because he's hanging out with his friends. His list of friends is growing every day, which is especially important for those activities after school and on weekends where they really don't want adults around. Now meet Gage. Gage has been through more in his twelve young years of life than most of us will ever go through in ours. He has not had a full day of school since first grade, and he's in seventh grade now. This is a picture of when I first met Gage. He asked me two questions. What's your job, and what do I call you? I told him, my job is to make sure you're happy at school, and you can call me anything but late for dinner. This is a picture of Gage last month, where he started in a brand-new school with a team of teachers waiting inside that knew how to think of him in strength-based ways. Before now, they thought that he could only attend fifteen minutes of general ed, that he only could focus for two minutes and thirty seconds at a time, and that he wouldn't sit down doing it. This is a picture of Gage after four hours of doing work in his general education classroom. It's pretty impressive. Next week, we're hoping to add a math class, which until now has been the most frustrated subject for him. He says he's ready. This is a text that I got from Gage after three weeks of success in his new school. He carries himself in a different way. He carries himself in a different way, and he's proud of what he's doing, and he should be. Every single person in this presentation so far has had a life-changing event where someone in their life thought, talked, wrote, or acted in strength-based ways on their behalf. My whole purpose tonight was to come and connect you with this new understanding of strength-based thinking, and to show you what success can truly look like. Now what are you going to do with it? Thank you. So, the takeaway to that, hopefully for you, is that the students that unfortunately, the students that we cannot service here in our communities, and we need to move to a more restricted environment, a more restricted setting of districts, they won't have those opportunities. They can't have those opportunities to be with very non-sable peers. And research has shown us that the best education for our students with disabilities is to have that side-by-side exposure to non-sable peers. So I'm truly proud and blessed of the strength of the school committee and the leadership here in Silver Lake to support program development here in the region. So I kind of thank them, I mean, it's the reason why I came to Silver Lake, and it's given me that opportunity to grow the programs and to keep our students in district. And it is most definitely paying off for all of our students. And I think they sort of thank for that. Just to conclude the presentation, I wanted to share future goals and recent recognition that our path is further than this is. So, we'll end on that note. But in terms of future goals, I'm still looking to expand our therapeutic and our language-based programs to the high school. I watch the cohort of students from preschool all the way through twenty-two. And I'm looking to see what the right timing is, what the right support needs to be in place to build the foundation of the next in-district program. So that's a landscape that I'm constantly watching and monitoring, and when the time is right, I will be making that.
And when the time is right, I will be making that pitch to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and to you. And hopefully, we'll have the continued support to build the program to the district and continue the path that we've started. Reviewing the continuum of supports for all students at all grade levels, looking at the inclusion supports that we have in place now to just promote learning environments that are truly least restrictive and just expanding all of our inclusion support programs from three K all the way through to twenty-two. So very recently, a couple of weeks back, Silver Lake was recognized for our wonderful post-secondary program. We were recognized in conjunction with our neighboring communities of Carver, Pembroke, Duxbury, Hanover, Marshfield, Plymouth, Cleveland, and Hanson. And we received this magnificent citation that I won't pass around to people to take a look at. It was beautiful that we had many state league legislators there. Joy participated as well. The next slide shows a picture of all of our students and our program teacher receiving the citation. So I'm going to pass the citation around so you can all take a look at that. And the Pathways program also has created brochures because I do believe that this program is very marketable, very marketable. And one of the things that we discussed very early on is, as I'm building these programs, will we reach a point where we can tuition students in to these programs? And this is by far so needed in our community. And we have wonderful counterparts in the area, but I really do believe that this program will no bounds in terms of being able to continue to promote students not only within our school communities but in neighboring communities as well. So that is really it for me. Questions?
Yes. Question, a question, is the two forty and the two sixty-two grant, are they federal or state-based?
They're both entitlement, they are federal grants.
Oh, okay, yeah. And I just want to thank the company and presenting to our committee because it really makes a difference to us to really understand what's happening on your side of the fence. And we're very grateful for the work you've done in the district concerning, you know, our special education and the drive you have to bring a lot of in-district programs. It's really something we've been longing for here. So I appreciate all your work here, of course.
Thanks for all the support.
Now, if you want to speak first or if you want me to just give a floor over, Steve? Well, I was just going to thank Marie. You know, as she said five days ago, when I hired Marie, one of the main things that, well, besides that, because she's fantastic, is her ability to bring programs in the district. And I think those numbers are really striking at this point of all the work and the investment we've made. And not only is it cost-saving, what matters most is you're doing the right thing for our children. And that's truly why we're all here. So I know on a personal level, I really appreciate it. You know, it takes a tremendous amount of effort and coordination to develop these programs, to find the right staff, to balance the budgets. Her job is particularly challenging, balancing budgets. But it's, it is something that, you know, only because of her skill set and her passion, we've really been able to develop so fantastic programs that are really exploitable. We really are. We're just so proud of them. I don't envy Steve, but guess what, Steve? Hard act to follow. Sorry.
But my numbers are all small.
Yes.
So you do actually have a sheet here that gives a basic breakdown of our starting point for the Halifax Technology budget. Before I get into this, though, I'd like to just give you a quick overview of the technology department as a whole. And when I think about the technology department, I think about it as a K to twelve tech department because so much of what we do in one building affects the others and vice versa. As a technology department, we have myself as the technology director, we have a network administrator, and then we have three full-time technicians. Silver Lake gets one point six techs. Kingston has one full-time tech, and then Halifax and Clinton each get a point two tech. So about a day a week for the tech department. Even that staff ratio, both myself and Jim McKendy, I'm sorry, our network administrator, do other things too. Today, I was calling under desk fixing cables. We do look at technology beyond what the students see on the device, on the monitor, or the administrator, because it's pervasive throughout our buildings. It goes so far beyond the learning room. We monitor our HVAC system with it. Our gas meter reports to the gas company, Gas usage. We have cameras. We access our buildings using technology. Our phone systems are all in the technology systems. We actually monitor students' medical devices in the nursery, monitor insulin using our networks. So as a tech department, we probably must manage all over seven thousand individual devices. As I said, it's not just the computers, it's the access points, it's the servers, it's the cameras, it's the phones. I like to think we're small, but like. We were able this year to bring in some summer help. So John Troy was a technology teacher in this building, was working on some of the equipment here. And we did have some students from Silver Lake that I think just graduated working on other devices in both Silver Lake and Kingston and Fulton. That was a huge help.
How many additional hours, you said you had to work here at the school with this summer help situation? You guys did a great job, so I just want to acknowledge that.
It was challenging. We actually did a lot of work on the Chromebooks and some of the other equipment at Denit because that's where we moved them all out to. Which Doctor didn't mind because Denit's air-conditioned. But we're not moving them back again this year.
Trailers are air-conditioned.
Trailers.
Really nice trails.
So the budget that you see here, we basically built on what we've done every year. And we did ask that if teachers have requests that get filtered through the technology department, just not so that we can tell them, "No, you don't need that," but so we can say, "Yes, it'll work with what we have." No. We do run what I would call an enterprise class network throughout our buildings. And there are certain things we just can't support on our networks. One thing that was popular request for a while was having an Alexa in the classroom or in the hall, which there's a lot of good points to it, it could be useful, but you don't want an always-on listening device in your classroom. So there are things that we tend to say no to only when it's a safety and security issue or if it's a device we just can't support.
We don't have them in our classrooms now, correct?
No.
Thank you.
No. We've never had an active one in the district, K to twelve. The E-rate process that we go through, and you'll notice I'm depending on this, that there are some things that are marked for E-rate. For those who are not familiar, federal government runs the E-rate program, which gives us reimbursement for all of our internet connection and appropriate hardware for connecting to the internet. So they will not give us any discounts on, say, a Chromebook, but they will on our servers, our switches, things that be used to actually connect to the internet. K to twelve, we received over ninety-three thousand dollars of E-rate funding this year. Halifax alone was just under thirty-four thousand dollars. Some of the other things that we're looking at that you'll see in the budget you may not have seen before are archive social. Because we need to archive all electronic communication, this also includes our social media accounts, so any social media account that's in a school district, we now need to archive the conversations for seventy years. I don't know what people are going to see in seventy years, but we do what we have to. Did a quick count, and in this building alone, we actually supported around nine hundred devices between desktop Chromebooks, the things you don't see. And I will call myself out because there is one error on the sheet under technology, hardware, and assistive technology, it says Raptor Visitor Security System. We actually have the Raptor system in place. That should be over under technology management, software subscriptions, because we do have to maintain that every year. I did check the budget, the number is in the right place in the budget, I just put the noted wrong places. Are there any questions looking at the list of categories and what we're looking at?
Is it similar with the management subscriptions similar to last year? Or is this over the last year's?
No, last year with the Raptor, I'm sorry, which?
Do the subscription area, I know that that?
The subscription area has jumped a bit because we are renewing our contract with whatever company we decide to use for our image filter, our Silvos antivirus is coming up for a little, and all of those do boost a little.
Question. The, it says that we have four entity Chromebooks that are going to end of life in June.
That's correct. Chromebooks are guaranteed to be supported for forty, three years. Guaranteed three years. We're seeing an average of five to six. But once their auto-update stops, you can no longer update them to the newest version of Chrome. Once that happens, they become vulnerable to security issues, they become vulnerable, not to viruses, but malware that could target the Chrome browser. And the MCAS testing will not allow them because of Pearson's requirement that you be on a certain version of Chrome.
So the REAP grant that we get, do we know roughly how many Chromebooks we can purchase with that grant?
That will more than cover the fifty I heard you mentioned.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, in the mid forties?
This year, it was forty thousand five hundred and thirty-two, I think.
So, but, so there's not a number allocated for Chromebooks in this?
I did, I did put hard requests for Chromebooks into the budget, into the hardware portion of the budget, yes.
So how many Chromebooks is that?
I can tell you exactly. Assuming my...
So one of the things that is always our ongoing problem is whether or not we qualify for REAP.
Yeah.
So we've been very lucky. And Steve, as I said, often is a great little shopper, that comes getting the most for our money. But, you know, we can't guarantee we're going to get REAP next year. Hopefully, we will again because the numbers are staying below that six under mark. I mean, that's one of the benefits of it. So hopefully, that will continue.
But I guess, I guess my, the question I'm needing to is, so we have a one-to-one in what, three through six?
Okay.
Okay. So the fifty-ish, over fifty Chromebooks we're replacing will keep our ratio consistent or are we increasing like our primary rates?
We're actually approaching one-to-one to two through six.
Okay.
But the fifty that are being replaced, those fifty will leave the building. In other words, the fifty that have gone out of life will be taken out of service.
So and those, those are covered, the ones that we're replacing are being covered by the REAP grant?
Yes.
So my question is, the Chromebooks that are in this category over here will be in addition to the ones that we are replacing?
If the committee chooses to leave them in there, yes.
Okay.
But again, as Joe was saying, the challenge is whether we get REAP or we won't get REAP. So I like to have them in the budget to show there's a need. Traditionally, what has happened the last few years is that it's been chosen to move them out of the regular budget and just assume we're going to replace them.
Right, right. So do you have an idea of how many allocated in the budget? It doesn't have to be exact, I'm just curious.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
I was just checking my numbers.
And if we do purchase these twenty-five in addition to what we're replacing, that will fully make two through six, one-to-one?
Yes.
Or is that going to make two, two through six, one-to-one, and maybe like two-to-one in K to K?
And so of cars, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. But I mean, we're pretty close, we're not too far behind.
No.
The whole building, we want one, even though we don't want our kindergarten common.
Right.
But I just want to make sure we're adequately...
We do not have any Chromebooks that are currently dedicated for grades K or one.
But we have a cart that they can use?
The carts that are in grade two could be used by grade one.
Maybe should be...
It's a matter of moving them across the building.
Oh, okay. Just certain that you're wanting to borrow them.
So, yeah.
Okay. So it looks like last year for the budget, we allocated more this current year, it's sixty-one thousand four thirty-five. And then if we add everything that you're requesting, that's seventy-six thousand, so it's about fifty thousand dollars more. Now, do either of those numbers reflect the E-rate?
All of the numbers here are based on us getting the assumed E-rate discounts.
Okay. Because it's a discount off of everything, it's not an extra.
That's correct.
Okay.
So whereas...
So if you ask for seventy-six thousand, you physically need seventy-six thousand?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And you have a follow-up list of this one we asked you for in February or February?
Well, yeah, I'm a pro-cured person. Yeah. So, you know, as, as we're building budgets, you know, I've already had, Jill and I have already had an initial meeting with Kane and Brian to go through their requests, just to get a sense of what they're hoping for, dreaming of. Christine is in the process of all of our staff and seeing where they fit into the budget because that is eighty percent of the budget approximately. Staff's about eighty percent of our, of our budget. So it's, it's a huge number, and we need to make sure we're accounting for someone who's got master's, who's moving up, you know, all those things. We also have to account for our professionals and, you know, all the custodians and cafeteria, well, cafeteria separate, but, you know, basically, the entire budget is mostly personnel. We have to determine on utilities, you know, what portion of the shared costs they will have to fit into bus contract, which was a question you asked earlier. So there's a lot of numbers that are floating around. So Kane is very important, but the reality is, it's really a small portion of the budget that is, is flexible. You know, the majority of it is staff. I mean, that is the reality of, of any school budget. They're, they're very close, eighty percent in all the schools. So as we're working our way through this, we will re-meet with Kane. Marie's dealing with her portion of the budget, Steve is doing his, I've had Melissa. And, you know, this has been the way I've been building budgets, you know, which I think everybody really appreciates because before, you didn't have any idea. By the way, I won't say you didn't have any idea, but I think it's clearer now how the budgets are built. It's a lot of meetings, and it's a lot of pieces, and it truly is a puzzle to figure out. So, you know, we will re-meet with Steve. Steve is a team player. You know, I, I can't think that Steve has ever given me a budget that I haven't cut. And I, I actually really like Steve. Just saying. You know, and Kane, and we tease him all the time, you know, I'm sure somewhere in there is his, his poster machine. And I tried to slide it at the end of last year, and you know what with it? You didn't buy it. Try to get a point out, you wouldn't do it. But, you know, there are those things, and it truly is a piece of it. So, you know, Steve builds a budget looking for what he feels we need. I don't, you know, all of them know they're wasting my time, they're wasting their time, they're wasting Jill's time, Christine's time, if they aren't careful to start with. Like, I'm not looking for you to get in the sun and moon and stars, like, don't even bother. Just, you know, just don't waste our time. You know, we've got too much to do. So everybody comes in, you know, Steve, Kane, Marie, everyone comes in with real numbers. So, you know, it used to be built differently, but that's been pretty much the way we've gone since I've been on board and, you know, and I'm hoping Jill will continue with a similar type of process. I've been on board and you know, and I'm hoping Jill will continue with a similar type of process because it works.
Yeah, I think my comment was just with this process.
Oh, yeah. Yep, absolutely. So we did meet today, actually with the bus company with Spur Student, just to get some sense of some of their numbers. I can't say it was the most optimistic conversation we've ever had. It was kind of frightening to get a sense of what some of the numbers may be. They are just one of the bus companies. Our hope is that we actually get some bids this year. We are going out earlier than we have ever wanted out. So hopefully we will actually have a little bit of competition, which will be very helpful. And we went through some of our areas of concern, some of the things that we are looking for in the new budget. It's going to be a new contract and we're hoping to get it out to bid maybe mid-December. We're really lucky. So that's sort of what we're working towards and then hopefully we would have bids in mid-January. So the first round of the budget, we won't have real numbers. We're just going to put in a placeholder. But hopefully by the time you're actually voting a budget, you will have a real bus contract number. And if it isn't going to go down, let's just say.
Are we asking, what year are we asking?
We talked, we went through many scenarios, continuing the three-year, the one-year extensions, five extension, seven. We got a lot of information on what that means to them, how that might be more appealing to a smaller vendor that maybe doesn't.
A lot.
They're not seen in our area. Whereas for Spur Student's philosophy is that if you tell us three years, we know that we'll get, they'll be able to use those buses in some capacity. To use the useful life. So it's not as big of an element to them. But maybe a smaller company that maybe are a few committed to buying, is we will go out and get new buses and they need that commitment to be able to get the buses.
Right.
So we learned a lot today, kind of from their perspective, from other members who support to us. So it was helpful.
So were they not so probably enthusiastic about doing a ten-year?
I don't think it was their goal.
Yeah, I don't think so either. You know, when I originally brought up the idea of a ten-year, that was through a conversation with Plymouth.
Yeah.
When Jill and I were at the MASC conference, we went to a bus. What's that called?
Workshop.
It was a bus workshop. I can't remember what the title of the workshop was.
So it was basically. Actually, pretty good.
It was. It was at the end of the day. I mean, you know, it was poor timing, but it was actually pretty good. I mean, we all stayed awake, more or less. So they talked about going out to bid and there was only apparently Plymouth is the only place that went out for ten years. According to them. And I assume they know because there's this regional transportation subgroup and I don't know bus contracts. There were all these, there was a lot of people up on the panel. So I don't know that we can afford new buses, particularly in my hope. I really, especially when I started hearing it. Mainly because of the contract that apparently we have for the drivers. The drivers, there's a contract Spur Student has for our drivers and Pembroke drivers. We apparently are sort of under subsidizing, underpaying, under, what was the word that she was maybe using?
Something similar to underpaying.
Underpaying, yes.
They're not making a lot of money.
They're not. They're not getting a lot of profit off of us, which I'm fine with, by the way.
Are those drivers?
Yes. Oh, yeah. So.
The good news is they have a contract and the bus drivers, that's four years.
They do. So that is.
They have a certain number, so they're not guesstuing about.
Right. So not every bus company is union, huh?
Not really, yeah. Right. So we're, as I said, our hope is that we'll get other bids. That will make a huge difference. If you remember, I'm trying to remember who may have been here, but five-ish years ago when we went out to bid, the numbers initially came in at, oh my God, like fourteen percent. I mean, I was literally on the sound.
And here the first fuel was.
Oh, it was horrific. It was just horrific. And there was a new gentleman that was there. And we really sort of kept having a lot of discussions. And eventually I did get them down to four-four-four.
But we didn't get new buses.
We didn't get new buses, but we had a contract that was payable. Yeah. So we could actually, you know, transport the children, but it really was a lot of wrangling, a huge amount of wrangling. So you know, Spur Student has been very good to us, but I think a little competition would be healthy. So that's sort of what we're hoping for. But we're really taking it very seriously. We're working really hard. Our hope is to go out by mid-December. We're going to have a longer period of time for it to be out to bid. We're also hoping that will be helpful. In the past, because it's gone out so late, there's been a quick turnaround. All of those things sort of work against us. We're hoping that by going out earlier, giving it a little bit longer, maybe we'll get some competition. So we're going to give it our best faith effort for the bus. But you know, again, Steve and Marie and Melissa are huge pieces of getting that information together for our budget. You know, and Christine is working diligently to get all the other pieces together.
Can we just add one quick thing?
Sure.
In years past, it's often been an article before the town on the town meeting.
Yeah.
For this past year, it was servers. I think one year it was the cameras. One year it was the extra phones. I don't see anything in the technology scope that would be putting an article before the town this year.
That's helpful information.
Yeah, that's good information.
Is there anything on this list that can be?
We're working on that.
You don't have to do that now. Just something.
We'll keep working that. So the other thing that I have here, and I just wanted to, I'm not looking for any movement on it, but it's just informational for you. If you remember last month, we talked a little bit about having VAN in the building. I'm not anticipating that this is probably going to be able to happen next year. But again, I really ground work for this. So I had a conversation with Brenda Lissar, the music teacher here, who's been with us forever. She is absolutely fantastic. We are very lucky to have Brenda on staff here. So Brenda had put together this proposal, which just gives you an idea of what has sort of been thought of as a way to make sense to bring VAN back into both Halifax and Plinton. I also share this with Plinton. Kingston Intermediate School, we started the conversation a couple of years ago and it took that long to sort of build it. And we put somebody in a point four in Kingston. It completed a point six music teacher at the elementary goes over to the intermediate for her other point four. It made her a whole staff member, full-time staff member. Here in Halifax, Brenda Lissar does not have any additional time in her schedule. And I have not found a time store. I've looked for it for years. I just can't find it to buy time. So she can't either. But this was an idea she had. I thought she put some good effort into it. I just wanted you to have this. Again, I don't anticipate from everything I've heard from the town that this may be the year to bring it forward. But again, that is your call. But I think you should have this information. I would love us to be able to build our program back up. We don't really have a per se warranty. We don't have kids coming up that have the background because they haven't had it during the school day. Not all parents can have kids stay after because there's no late buses. We have not figured out a better way of doing this. But this is something that again is just informational for you. I did want to thank Brenda for taking the time to put this together. I would love to be able to do this. I just don't know that the town is in a position that this would be considered a priority. But I think it's great. I think she did a very nice job bringing it together. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Did you check, does Pembroke have like a four to six?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Austin Glass, the VAN director, happens to live in Kingston. And he was quite a regular at school committee meetings until we got it off board. It was ongoing. So yeah, really absolutely double. Yeah. You know, we used to have it in all the buildings. It fell out. You know, this is not adding, this is replacing something that was taken out. Steve, you've been here a long time. Do you remember when we cut it?
Yeah, I can remember.
Okay. Yeah. So we used to have VAN during the school day.
Right now, do we have something after school?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. The kids get lessons after school.
Do they pay?
I can't remember what the person.
It's like a staff at our school.
No.
Not Johnson?
It used to be. I don't know if John's still doing it. It's an older daughter.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think, I don't know that it's through the record program. I don't. I don't think it is. And Plintonia, excuse me, Plintonia, I need to tease them. Plinton, I believe the kids come over here for the lessons also. So.
And it's not cheap.
No.
Or it's really?
No, it isn't. So it's really, you know, you have to, it's, I like to equal the plank, kind of like as Marie said. The plank should be equal and the only way to really do that is all kids access and have a fighting chance. Because for many kids, this is what really makes their education worthwhile, you know, is to have during the school day. Very similar to when I wanted to bring a school day tech. I mean, that was one of the first things that, you know, for those people around a long time ago, if you remember, was, you know, I really believe strongly. I'm still just so proud of all the districts. You know, not everybody can afford a tech, you know, to make that field equal. You know, it's something that you really pout up. Yeah. But again, I personally feel strongly that this is a wonderful proposal. I really do. I, you know, it will be your decision on what the committee wants to do, but I think this is a great proposal. Brenda did a really nice job bringing it forward. So I did want to thank her for that. So we've had Melissa come in. We've had Steve come in. We've had Marie come in. The union did a nice job bringing together some of their thoughts in their letter. Steve's good man, can't talk. So you have lots of bits and pieces of information. As we are building the budget, this will be our last meeting before January, when we actually bring forward a budget. Jill and I will be working very closely to have all those pieces in place. And it is, I don't remember when, but it's sometime in early January. I will definitely still be here. We will get that budget together and bring it forward to you. Is there anything else that you would like to know or anything else you want us to take into consideration as we're building the budget?
I personally would like to talk about.
Yeah.
Yes. Corinne, do you have something to say before we talk about that?
That was about.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowley-Cheek for bringing this forward. I really appreciate it. I think that again, to sort of, although when I said to Mrs. Crable, it's as a committee, we don't see a lot of what happens on the U.S. side of the fence. And so it's, when we're making the decision to build the budget, we not only stand here representing the taxpayer, we represent the children. And of course, we're all here because we want to bless our kids, but we also want to be able to support the town. So, yeah, teach us. So in regards to what you've presented to us, my first question is, is this in any particular order?
Yes.
Okay.
So as I stated earlier, the priority number one, from a majority of the members in our association, centers around class size. For obviously for reasons Mrs. Townsend expressed as an educator, and we echo that statement. That particular cohort is high, you know, across the board. So the domino effects that go into class size is huge. And again, this comes from the perspective of teachers, many that don't have the responsibilities of putting together a budget. But the sentiment being working in the front lines with children, providing the best education that they can provide, knowing what twenty-one, what twenty feels like at twenty-six. It's pretty strong feedback to the union to say to you tonight that it's worked. So while we don't have any set number in our contract that says, you know, what our ideal expectation for class size is, I mean, twenty's a huge number and we're close to it in many spots. We'll grow at one. But we're above, we're at twenty-five and above twenty-three in two. So that is number one. And I do respect the job that you have to do to put the budget together. And again, I remember at this school when it was, you know, there were people coming out of walls. There was no extra room. There was classrooms everywhere. People were on carts. Programs didn't have the luxuries some of them now to have the space they have. But the town's capable of at any time, any trend, kind of move that way. So it'd be nice, when I say from the union's end of it, to add a position rather than move and manage from what we already have, that we're kind of getting ahead. And we're providing really great opportunity. And that would be one for those that are, you know, arguing that, well, I should say students, the parents that we get tonight and the teachers that feel that way from within, that it's a lot of kids. So to get ahead of it, I know it's tough financially and again, I appreciate all the work that you do to push it to the town. It's a tough process and you know, the town's in the position it's in. I get it. But I can just tell you from our perspective, it's at the top. I don't know if you want me to move down through this list or if you want to continue comments on number one. But yes, they are prioritized. And then as we go down to number six, last year, the, these were all pretty much the same with the exception of number five, which refers to a building, excuse me, now, number four, a full-time building substitute. I'm sorry, go down. So having somebody in-house that's a full-time employee based on substitute level to be here when people, you know, there's not enough subs in the building to cover the positions and services and responsibilities that we need to give. You know, when issues arise, and again, I don't want to step my boundaries for the administration and how they handle it. They do a wonderful job here, but having somebody in-house to be flexible and provide coverage in certain areas on very spontaneous situations, that came up within the union to help out, to make sure things are covered. You know, when absenteeism or some reason someone's pulled out of a position that, you know, we're dealt with handling. So that was added this year. Again, number two, additional part-time aides. This was to free up teachers from the duty that they do every week, the recess or lunch duty. A lot of schools, I believe, have aides for that. Not all do. I know in our contract it says that the committee should, you know, tries to primarily have aides do that. I'm sorry, to provide a belief for teachers on the playgrounds and cafeteria duties. But we've done it with teachers supporting them out there for years. But it allows a teacher to have a full duty-free time, a lunch that is fifteen to twenty minutes from the day that they do have the duty to kind of reset, do a little prep too on the back ends, but to reset for the second half of the day. Doesn't sound like much, but I can tell you, it does make a difference that it made it on our list. That also would help out to the paraprofessionals that we do here, that they wouldn't have to be if we hired some part-time additional aides and they could be used a little bit more in the classroom and not have to be in other areas with them. Sped position, I believe, this table could speak to this. I believe we covered one sped teacher in our school. Grades three, four, five, excuse me, four, five and six. And I think we share K-one and two, three currently. One teacher.
Five specialized teachers.
So again, one is in each three, four, five, six, excuse me, four, five and six. And there's one sped teacher to share, K-one, and another one that does two, three. Am I correct with that? So the request was to add one. So then grades two through six, we have one per, and then we'd be left with one teacher sharing K-one. Number five, a building-based math coach. I believe this came up for discussion last year with the committee in regards to, we have positions to support ELA with speech and reading, but nothing for math. So it wasn't a huge outcry from our group, but it was probably okay. Last year, there was potentially, if I recall, something that the district was talking, not district, why? But this committee was talking about potentially looking at sharing. A position. And number six, with the purchase of additional iPad and Chromebooks, kind of talks about some of the information you just got from Steve with most grade levels having a one-to-one, but just trying to improve the access to tech, the primary grade levels. Grade one, grade two. Again, our respect to everything you do, this was again, the perspective of the union. Some of the things that they brought forward to me to pass on to you to think about, but with a very strong emphasis on number one across the board of them. Appreciate you giving me the time to share that with you guys. It's been nice to have you with us.
Yeah, absolutely. We need to know. How do we know what we don't know, you know? I have a couple of questions. The sped position. I guess I would direct my question to the sped director. I guess I would direct my question to the sped director and the building administrators as to whether or not this is a pressing need. I don't say that lightly, okay, like, do we need, we always need more support, clearly. Um, you don't have to answer right now, but just something to think about. Um, and logistically, for number five, the building substitute, is that like a typical thing? I've never heard of this before. And how do you, like, make, retain that position? Like, how do you, and if you say you have a full-time building substitute, what does that person do if you don't need a substitute at that point?
All four questions. Um, so, we don't have a building substitute in any six buildings, in any four, six buildings. Um, it is something that some districts do have, and then the substitute visiting, isn't needed in that building, we go to a different building. The reality is, is probably most every day, somebody's out. I don't know that for a fact in Halifax, but certainly in the high school, just based on the number of teachers, it's, it's a reality. I don't know in Halifax that it is, you don't have that many teachers here. So, I, I would tend to think it's not needed necessarily every single day.
So, without being said, would that be more of like a shared cost position?
Um, we have substitutes. Um, it would be something that if we were to have a full-time substitute, the rate would go up pretty dramatically if there were any benefits.
Yep.
So, it, it is, it is more costly than just the cost of a sub. Um, it would be at some point, something that if we really put a lot of effort into maybe think about. Um, we have our regular subs, the ones who come in most every day, that are, you know, familiar to us, um, and that are, are, they like our school. Um, if you notice online list, next down is increased subs to pay.
Yep.
Um, so it is something that we have struggled getting subs. Um, but to Gordon's point, if we got a full-time, you know, you're dealing with insurance benefits, you're increasing because you probably be paying them about your step one, so two twenties a day. So, you know, it's really a whole different ballgame to have a new, uh... You're basically hiring a teacher, fulfilling a full teacher.
Yeah, which I can imagine would be very difficult, and somebody who's, again, coming from my perspective, I would think that if you were a float, you'd have to be like very highly qualified to be able to teach kindergarten and then turn around and teach like freshman science or something. If you're, if you're district what, you know what I mean? So, it's like, that seems very, I just didn't know how that worked.
Can I ask some questions about?
Absolutely.
Or two? Um, so what is the, what is the situation right now? What, the teachers, they obviously don't do it every day, cover lunch and recess?
One day.
One day a week, they, so they kind of rotate them?
Yeah.
Okay. And when they cover recess, do they also cover lunch that same day?
Just typically, it's, it's recess, and, I'm saying it's recess.
Okay.
And then parents do both.
Parents do both, okay. So, like, if I was a third grade teacher, one day a week, I'd have to cover recess?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then not lunch?
Not lunch.
Okay. And, um, how much, how long is their prep time every day?
Forty minutes.
Forty minutes? Is that when they get their red specials?
Yes.
How long is recess?
Twenty-five minutes? Almost one to twenty.
And the teachers generally eat lunch when their kids are at lunch?
Yes.
Kind of like those?
Yes.
What is this, twenty minutes, one, two, thirty?
Yes, so teachers report here at eight.
Okay.
Students start walking in the door at fifteen.
Okay.
And then first official specialist block starts at eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five?
Eight thirty-five. Eighth, but after eight thirty, the student is marked. So, we do announcements between eight thirty and eight thirty-five, and then our first, our grade six travels to specialists, so there's that, that's why they have a little window there.
And do the specialists, they have a forty-minute prep as well, or is it different?
They have forty-minute, right, forty-minute.
Whatever. And, okay, and do they ever have to cover lunch or recess?
They, because of their schedule, it's, it's a little different. So, the specialists, they're doing bus duties and hall days.
Gotcha, as a, as a duty off term.
Yes, so that's why it's not as clean. As it is now.
They would probably have kids during the lunch and recess time.
Just making a comment about the lunch duty, which it really falls to now with the, the teachers. So, they're all out now. It's been in the past where some would do indoors at the cafeteria, and some would do recess, but now it's, it's all recess.
Yeah.
So, the complaint was, so the teacher comes in after a twenty-minute recess, and there's a five-minute buffer to bring them in from the back fields all the way around to the cafeteria, which takes some time, roughly anywhere from sixty to a hundred kids, depending on the grade. That by the time that the kids lined up and the teachers led them in the building, um, they're now going into, it's a forty-minute block of time between the recess, actually forty-five minutes, twenty minutes of recess, five minutes buffer, twenty minutes of, uh, the lunch cafeteria. So, and the teacher would come in after the walk-in, they're probably getting into the cafeteria at some time to eat their own lunch, fifteen minutes, seven minutes, depending on how quickly that process out there, lines up, and then walks in. So, that was the effort. It's a small amount of time, but again, in the reset mode of the educator, um, around that midpoint of the day, on that particular day, you know, there's a lot that needs to get done to kind of freshen up for that second half, you know, providing they're on the prep in the second half of the day, depending on their specialist, uh, schedule, that that was the reason for, um, the proposal, to see if we could find some part-time, um, coverage for that particular time, you know, of the day, the recesses to get covered.
Yep.
Is it always recess and lunch?
Yes. Yes.
Can I just say, while this doesn't affect you, I appreciate how passionate you speak about it for the rest of the staff of the, of the regular classroom teachers. I appreciate that.
So, the last thing I have to do?
No, I'm, I just, my wheels are turning, because anybody else might just say, well, he's here to talk about.
Twenty-three, it will be fifteen dollars an hour. So, if you think of a substitute working a seven-hour day, that's a hundred and five dollars by twenty twenty-three, that would be the minimum wage. We currently pay eighty-five dollars for a daily sub. Um, it is within the reasonable norm. We're not real high, we're not real low, we're sort of in the middle. Um, we have a terrible time getting subs. We do have some regular subs we get, but we don't have people lining up to be subs. Can't say I blame them, I, so, for myself, I get it. Um, I do believe that increasing the substitute rate of pay is the right thing to do. We increased it last year from seventy-five to eighty-five, um, last year. We were able to, um, incorporate that. Um, I would like to recommend that we increase it again. Um, again, that is something that we could do it, um, starting in January, um, again, which is what we did last year. Um, I don't know that we want to go from eighty-five all the way to the hundred and five, um, but I believe if we were to move it up to ninety-five, um, we would be a little bit higher than several surrounding districts, although I think they're already doing the same thing we're doing, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, I think we'd have a much better chance of getting some subs. Um, I would assume that afterwards Jill will, will come back to you to talk about it again. Um, I'm trying to spread out, I don't want to say the hit, but the impact on the budget, um, a little bit. So, I think if we were to do again another ten dollars for our daily subs, it would not, it would be a smart thing for us to do, and I believe it's morally the right thing to do. Um, you know, these, these people have our children, um, and we really need to get some good, qualified people. Um, we were able to accommodate it within the budget last year. Um, I am hopeful that that will be true again this year, um, in terms of the impact. So, I just wanted to let you know, I don't believe technically, I need to have a vote, but I would love your moral support, you already agreed with me, um, to do that. Um, if, if you, if you.
I'll make an motion to.
Close, we're over.
All right.
Thank you. Um, the other thing is substitute nurses.
So, we have, um, what requirements do we have for a substitute here?
Well, I almost said that, I stopped it also, thank you, thank you for, for stopping me. Uh, so, we asked, they have two years of college.
Okay.
Um, and also they have to be twenty. So, we're looking for someone who is at least twenty years old. So, usually, it's, it's, for a lot of times, to be honest, some of our kids come back, which are regular subs. Yeah, um, you know, and they get done a day, and so, May to June?
Oh, May to June.
Yeah, absolutely. May and June, often, you know, our staff is out a lot of personal days. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely a time that we are struggling mightily to cover classes. So, um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
So, two years college, you have to have finished the two years, but they can still be in college?
Yes, exactly, that's what we're looking for.
Or, you have any associates to be talking to?
Yeah, um, yeah, we, we have had some situations where it's a former staff member that comes in that's well-known, that, you know, may not have that exact criteria, but we know that they're known to fit. Yeah, exactly, sometimes being secretary, so I mean, it's, we've had a variety of things.
It's stolen, like thirteen fifty an hour.
It's ridiculous, yeah, it's, it's totally ridiculous, really. Um, but again, I, I'm just worried about the budget impact, so I'm trying to just kind of continue to move forward. I think it's, it's the problem to try and deal with at this point. Um, so substitute nurses, so we have a terrible, really seriously terrible plan getting nurses. To, a substitute nurse should be an RN, okay? LPNs don't qualify, that is the state rule. So, to try to find an RN willing to substitute when they can make tremendous amount of money working in a hospital is really difficult, um, to find them. So, there are a couple of sub-services. Um, we just got a bill, actually, and Christine was nice enough to share the bill with me, when I was saying that, hung in cheek. If we have to go outside of our regular subs, just take an educated guess what we have to pay. But, do you know what it is?
Three hundred and fifty dollars a day?
Three ninety. Isn't that ridiculous? So, we have to pay, if we have to hire a sub-service, they charge us three hundred and ninety dollars a day. So, it is absolutely outrageous.
What does the nurse get?
Well, right now, they get one twenty-five.
But the service gets?
Well, oh, I don't know what the nurse gets, that works for the service, I don't know that. If we just have a nurse that comes in, that's an RN that we have screened, we pay one twenty-five.
Okay.
If we can't find somebody, yeah, if we can't find someone, we, we have to have a nurse, right? We have a nurse in the building.
Yeah.
The next thing we do, if we call every nurse we know, is we have to call these services, and we pay three hundred and ninety dollars a day. So, um, I, uh, Jill and I did a survey of surrounding districts, and they range from our, our rate of one twenty-five to two hundred and forty dollars.
Because it's still a cost savings to have, or to avoid using a service.
Right. So, the district that paid two forty had four people that were regular subs, they had no trouble filling in. Um, so, I, you know, the good, the great news is, is our nurses are well-aware how, how difficult it is for us to find them, so they really don't take sick days. I mean, they're, they're really very good to us. Um, they, they probably have the best attendance of anybody on staff, to be honest with you, just because they know. Um, one of the things I would like to move to is to increase it to one seventy-five. To be honest, we should probably go to two hundred, but again, just in terms of budget impact, um, you know, I'd like to try to move it up to one seventy-five.
How long have we had a use like this?
We have always had to use a subservice when we can't find anyone. We can't, we are legally not allowed to have an LPN in.
So, that though we have is because you use that.
Oh, yeah, yes, we get it all the time, we get it all the time, yeah.
But in Halifax, how many times have we used it in the last?
Not, not in Halifax.
I don't think we've had to go outside yet.
No, no.
Not a lot here.
Yes. So, again, it's, some of it is based that our nurses are very good to us about it, and if you know they're going to be out, if you have the opportunity to know, they might name somebody they can call. Um, but we have had situations where those people just aren't available.
Of course, yeah, I mean, a nurses can have hunky schedules and whatever.
Yeah.
Um, where, where, what line item in the budget does it come out of? Substitute or from?
It comes out of the regular substitute.
Okay. Oh, there.
Thank you. Um, again, this isn't where it should end, I hate to say, but I, I, again, we're trying to move a progression to move forward. Um, you know, that's, that's a big jump, I realize that, but again, if it, we, we don't really have a choice. It's a question of three ninety a day, um, it doesn't be too long for it. This would be a lot cheaper if A could have a little better. So, we'll.
Really, that doesn't avoid us using the service?
No, not at all, I mean, we'll have time, but we may have to.
But maybe they'll.
Be a little more. Yes, that's, oh, yeah.
And you're.
Yes, right. Um, so, when we're building the budget, um, if you see some increases in the substitute line, it's because we accommodate these new numbers.
And I assume that you are going to make the same argument and throw up the district's very good guess. Gordon, get to your real question.
Yay!
At least I won't ask the same question.
And we appreciate that. Um, and again, I technically don't, I don't believe I need to get a part, but I appreciate the support, and I just want you to know, some struggles we're going through from building budgets.
And we appreciate the open-minded communication, and we hope that, that's, that's. Go ahead.
So, yeah, the number of personal days per contract?
For what?
So, for teachers.
Three days?
Three personal days?
Yes.
How many sick days?
Fifteen.
And if they go into the sick bank, they have to donate one?
Typically, they ought to be a benefit of, a beneficiary of that benefit, they have to donate one day.
Out of the whole time they could work, yeah, so if the bank number drops below that number?
Doesn't drop below thirty, they don't have to donate another one. When it does, they do.
Do they have to donate in order to be sent? I can't remember the wording.
Yes, they have to donate one day upon being hired or joining the union, um, to be a beneficiary of the sick bank.
Okay, so everybody, one day joined?
We ask them to donate a day if they're interested in the benefit, and they do.
Can we have sick days to parents as well, but we don't typically use substitutes unless it's a long-term?
Um, it is very difficult to find a para-substitute. If we have a para who is a one-to-one, um, who work especially hard to find a replacement, if we can, we fill it, but to be honest, we're the smartest of people. You want to add that?
So, a substitute para also gets the same rate as a substitute classroom teacher?
No. Um, I, I can't remember, Dale's not a payroll person.
Fifty-nine hundred and sixty-two cents per hour for a para.
For a substitute para?
For a substitute.
But it's more than a.
But it's, then it's less hours.
It is, yeah, they get the actual same rate as a sub, because we don't, it depends on the situation.
And you don't want.
Yeah, there's a straight rate for teachers, but para's, there isn't a substitute para, yeah, exactly.
And it's less hours than teachers.
Okay.
So, they're all that, yeah, well, they can't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't think too much.
Yeah, well.
We've never hired a substitute para.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's related to one to one. You know, or it's an extended period of time, somebody's going to be out, that way for the need to replace a position.
Few days to remember before we return to go into executive session, because this meeting just hasn't been longer than tonight, so I want to make it longer. Um, you know, number twenty-seventh is early release for grades seven through twelve. They are being released at ten forty-five AM. K through six is being released at noon, there is no lunch serve, but as we know, we've heard the breakfast menu. Um, the twentieth and twenty-ninth, uh, everybody's off for Thanksgiving. And, uh, the December twenty-third through January first of next year, everyone is off for the holidays. January second, school reopens, and January sixth is our next school meeting meeting, the winter concert on the twelfth. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. So, before we return to go into executive session, um, I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, happy and safe Thanksgiving, and actually, we won't see you before the holidays either, so. And actually, we won't see you before the holidays either, so. Very nice. Happy holidays, happy New Year.
Yeah.
Everybody be safe and make sure you come back.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to adjourn regular session. I'll need to reopen to adjourn for the evening. And I think we need a roll call to go into executive.
Purpose for negotiations with the tariff officials, agreement discussion for Massachusetts federal law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, section A, section.
Thank you, Corinne. Bye.
Alright.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.